This meeting order, welcome everybody to our informal and special session today. And the first order of business is the chair will entertain a motion. Once again, do we have these?
No, we're not going to close session for it. We'll just call for it.
Okay. Now, hang on one second. I gotta get my reading script. Here we go. All right, honorable members of City Council, in accordance with Virginia Beach Code, City Code 2-21, and by authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Virginia, hereby call for a special formal session of the Virginia Beach City Council. And that would be Tuesday, April 11, 2022, at the conclusion of the open meeting items, City Council Conference Room 2034, Building 1, City Hall, 2nd floor, 2401 Courthouse Drive. The purpose of this special formal session is to allow City Council to convene into a closed session to consider the following matters: publicly held property in District 2, public contract Atlantic Park construction contracts, and personal matters for council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, and agencies, task force, and appointees. At the conclusion of the closed session, the council will reconvene into an open session for the purposes of certifying the closed session. Okay? We're all set there. Okay, now roll call?
I don't need to roll call, man.
Okay. Alrighty, good, good. At this point, we're gonna start off with the City Council's briefings. You know, once again, I think there was an article in the paper today in a number of City Talk among us. You know, we had originally invited Mr. Norman Jenkins of Capstone to come in and present a very ambitious plan that would obviously, if it comes to fruition, would it take our city to the next level? You know, perhaps even at tier one, you know, resort area. But, you know, due to, you know, a lot of other considerations that we have, the timing may not have been optimal to give Mr. Jenkins a true and fair shot of what's going on. We got a couple factors that we have to take into consideration. Number one, you know, we're right in the middle of a budget process that is gonna be very, very challenging to all of us. And, you know, to me, you know, once again, just by delaying and finding out where our financial situation, you know, is gonna land at the end of the budget process, you know, I think that would be mission essential. And the other thing is too, we're just now, you know, closing the door on the Atlantic Park project. That, you know, this is a project that has been in the making for six years, and, you know, we've had a number of hurdles and challenges, you know, along the way, you know, but once again, you know, just trying to present a major project at a time we're just closing a project. You know, we wanna make sure that we have, you know, you know, to give Mr. Jenkins a fair shot. And the other thing that I took into, I took into consideration, because I will accept responsibility, you know, for, you know, being, moving forward with just, and once again, it's not a cancellation, it's just a deferral to another time, that, you know, this is a, once again, a very complex project that will require a supermajority vote. So, in other words, to give a good playing field and a good environment for Mr. Jenkins to come and explain, I think is, you know, really paramount. Now, in order to address some of the other, you know, external concerns, I'm gonna make a recommendation. We had a very, very successful outcome when we put together this civilian police review committee task force that really kinda looked in, you know, to all the nuances and things that are involved. And, you know, talking with Worth Remick, you know, and I think a major consideration is, boy, we have a parking problem now that Atlantic Park is here and we're losing spaces and everything. So maybe more advantageous for Mr. Jenkins and, you know, perhaps others, that if we had a, you know, strategic plan, you know, a, you know, vision about what has to be done. You know, this, Mr. Jenkins' project is part and parcel, but also when you think about the entire 19th Street corridor, when we talk about the parking challenges and everything that we're gonna have, is that if we were to have, you know, more of a strategic vision of about what's known, and if we put together the players that, you know, very similar to the type of people we put in, you know, with the civilian review board, you know, we can get an outcome, and that we get a blend of people that come up with this vision. And, but the other thing is maybe also to even consider reissuing the RFI, you know, to make sure that all people are considered. But I think that, once again, you, and I spoke at length to Mr. Jenkins, and I also spoke to somebody at MEB, and, you know, once again, you know, sometimes a strategic delay is, could be in the best interest of everybody. You know, once again, you know, this is timing. And when you think about the fact that we're just coming out of COVID into a recession, you know, once, the market right now is a little bit scary and our obligations are up there. But once again, if we do have the vision on how we're gonna take care of, you know, you know, the immediate parking situation that we're taking care of, I really think that this would be a, you know, you know, the best pathway, you know, to come to a win-win situation and get many of the people that should be involved, involved, so we have a sense of clarity going forward. Okay, yeah, Barbara?
When, when all this came up, I was trying to get, because I told you all the day that we did have that briefing, that I didn't remember seeing anything about it. I've been looking at things, and I appreciate what you just said about having people come together, because we did adopt the resort area strategic action plan in June of 2020. And I think that was a year of work of the people, the stakeholders in that area, and in trying to prepare for this. I've got a copy of that, and I think, I think this is a good starting point, because so many things have happened in this area since 2020. It's amazing that this really needs to be updated before we consider something else. But the other thing that I asked for, because I just didn't remember, and I thought I was losing my mind, but I found out it wasn't, I asked for a copy of the RFI. Actually, I think we made it up. We called it a request for letter of interest in qualifications, RLLQ, or Rudy, and then we kind of also made one for this property. But there is a section that's a non-binding responses that says this RLLQ is not intended to be binding upon the city, the VBDA, or the potential developer, nor is the city or the VBDA going to make a project award based on the response to this RLQ, RLIQ. However, if the city, in the city of VB, or the VBDA's discretion, a subsequent request for proposal process, RFP, may occur with a respondents to the RLIQ. So, based on that, I'm thinking that maybe this, this proposal, which was the only one we got on this particular issue, the Rudy, of course, had four, and so we went forward with that. But my recollection is that since there wasn't a supermajority when it was presented to the council last August, it was just set aside and not pursued and dropped. So with this disclosure, or this, you know, this clause in here, it would seem to me that that's where that particular proposal sort of stopped, and if it's going to be restarted, it kinda needs to be done again with another process. But anyway, that was my, my recollection, there just wasn't a supermajority to go forward in August, and, and that council decided or declined to go forward. I think for a lot of the reasons you just mentioned, the whole timing. Timing is everything, and if you don't have the right timing and the right situation in place, it's not, not good. So, I think if there, there's going to be anything with this project, it needs to start all over. And I think your proposal is a good way to do it, with bringing together the stakeholders in the area and putting together a plan to see if this is the right thing, and I think that's a good proposal you made.
And then if I could say, you know, and Worth, if I could share, you know, the conversation that we had. You know, I think, you know, in fairness to Mr. Jenkins and, you know, the process, that we should take this with a sense of immediacy, that once we get through the budget process and everything, you know, is, rather than having this linger, you know, regrettably, the Atlantic Park project took six years to get through fruition. That should not be, you know, the model that we use going forward, you know, in terms of what we're gonna be doing in the future. But once again, you know, given the fact that this council, you know, is really, you know, concerned with public engagement and doing the right thing and coming together with the right plan that, you know, people can buy into, but, you know, but, you know, once again, it's, you know, it's just a thought, like, you know, just kinda refocusing and everything, and, you know, you know, Mr. Jenkins has a marvelous plan in fact, and we wanna give him the opportunity to present it. But once again, you know, given the complexity of the property, that, you know, certain conditions that do exist, you know, that, you know, create challenges that really aren't there when it just requires a simple majority vote, you know, I think, you know, it's in fairness to Mr. Jenkins, that, you know, we just take a little time, but we act on this expeditiously. Okay, Chris?
I appreciate that, Mayor Dyer and Councilwoman Henley. When we called a special session a couple months ago, myself and two colleagues, we had a one-on-one conversation, Mayor, and you had asked that in the future there would have been a courtesy to speak with you. And so the first concern on Friday, and I spoke to Mr. Jenkins Friday morning before all of the chatter and some of these decisions, and he had a plane ticket. So, he was intending on coming. He's best-in-class, first-in-class. He's a professional. Clearly, we probably should have communicated to a first-in-class, best-in-class developer prior to Good Friday that he wasn't welcome on Tuesday. You mentioned the budget process. If that's the case, we were elected, five new people, and all of us, to do a job. I think as a City Council, we have capable, competent individuals that can walk and chew gum at the same time. If the Atlantic Park project is such a big deal, and that's the concern, this is apples and zebras. We have zero public money being asked from Mr. Jenkins, 140 million plus, plus, plus. Big difference. We're talking about a presentation. There was no vote. You bring up the, the study, Councilwoman Henley, it's right here, it's discussed about having a hotel there. Now, all of a sudden, once rack gets wind of Mr. Jenkins' old plan, it was Stacy Parker wrote an article last summer with the Rinderin. And so I think it's a little misleading to hear that this just popped up out of nowhere. As Miss Henley said, it didn't pop up, we just kinda didn't have a recollection of it. It was in the paper, you have the report. And so, the message that we could be sending to individuals that aren't stakeholders here locally is that we're not open for business, that we have to get approval from restaurateurs, surf park owners, developers that we've contributed 140 million to. And if public input is so important, I suggest that we stop talking about Atlantic Park enclosed, and let's bring it to the open. Let's discuss what's necessary to bring this project to close. Let's be transparent with the public and see if there's any more ask. Are we where we need to be, or do we need some additional funds? Another concern is that 11 people outside of this City Council approached me talking about closed-session business. 11 individuals, I won't name their names. How do 11 people that don't sit on City Council have the knowledge, facts, down to the number of rooms, about closed-session business? And I didn't talk to them. John Zirkle's here. He brought it up at a lunch Amelia and I were at. Did I discuss the details? Nope. So that's a concern. So if we wanna reissue the RFI, if we wanna go down this track, I hope that when other projects come that require 10 cents in expenditures, that we use the four reasons you gave. We're in the middle of a budget. Atlantic Park project is just so monumental that we can't do anything else at the same time, and that we should reissue RFI as if we don't like the individual that submits it.
Anybody else? You know, Mrs. Taylor, trust me when I say, you know, I appreciate your passion. One of my duties and responsibilities as mayor, we're all equal at this table, I'm one vote, but one of the, one of my main responsibilities is setting the agenda. And if I could tell a story, you know, I met Mr. Jenkins a couple years ago, and we talked about, he, at, there was a time he didn't wanna do business in Virginia Beach, but he does now. And the thing is, sometimes you gotta make it, you know, you have, once again, Chris, you know, we can, you know, have a difference in philosophy on this, and I respect it, and I agree with you 100%. But the thing is, I think my responsibility slash our responsibility is that we do things in such a manner that we provide a path to success. And the fact is that if we were getting with these other individuals weighing in and everything, you know, would have, yeah, and then the questions that may have arisen after, and, you know, you know, like I said, you know, this, it was a judgment call, because, trust me when I say, Chris, if it wasn't a supermajority vote, he would have been here. Okay? But once again, you know, one of our visions as we, don't forget, I was on the liaison to the Minority Business Council, you know, for 14 years, and I think I proved my commitment to leveling the playing field. And the thing is, but the other thing is, the other thing is providing that path to success. And by, you know, delaying for a bit to find, you know, get, figure out what's going on with inflation, recessions, and things like that, and even by, you know, Mr. Jenkins' comment to me, it would take a couple years to get this thing rolling, okay, by the time everything got done. So I do take the responsibility, and, but the thing is, though, and believe me when I say, and I conveyed this to Mr. Jenkins in a very lengthy phone call, you know, my commitment is to make sure that he does get that fair hearing and the best possible path to success. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor, and I don't wanna belabor the conversation too much, but I do want the public, viewing public and the community to know that it's not just Councilman Taylor who holds some of these sentiments. I have heard at least three or more briefings about this project at City Council. We, Councilman Taylor pointed out that there have been newspaper reports about this proposal. We authorized an RFIQ that was distributed to the public. So I'm quite confused and disappointed that members of this body have no recollection or perpetuate a narrative that this was closed, because it was anything but. And, and Mayor, you should take a lot of responsibility for ensuring that it was conducted out in the open, because I know that you did. And I find it very concerning that members of this body and also members of the public are potentially perpetuating the stereotype that Virginia Beach has, fair or unfair, or somewhere in between, that we are a place that's closed to business for some. And I fear that this outcome of this, of this development will just continue that and perpetuate that stereotype. And what's wrong with a presentation? I'm confused by the notion that having a discussion about an idea is not good. On the contrary, I think it's a very good idea to have discussions about ideas. And, and Mayor, I don't know that, I'm just looking around this table, I don't know that this body, if you took a poll, which I'm not gonna ask anyone to do, supports the decision to, I think, I think, for me, I understand your decision, and particularly about creating a pathway for success, but I'm very concerned about the precedent this sets. I'm very concerned about the outsized influence that variety of individuals and organizations have over processes like this. And I don't think, again, if I took a poll around this body, that this body would, would, would agree, I, I think they would agree with all, with that. And I think we need to be very careful about how we proceed, and I don't think it's in the city's interest or in the public's interest to tell a qualified developer with an idea to either hold or go away. And I'm not sure what the motivation is, but I know that a technique of people who don't wanna deal with something is to delay it in process. That's, that's a, not a new technique. If you don't like something, you can kill it in process. And I don't know that that's what's happening, but I wonder. And I think we need to be really clear and out in the open about what's going on here and about the precedent that we're setting or perpetuating through this, this development.
Hey, Michael, if I can, just, and Barbara, I'll get to you. You know, let me put it this way, you know, any type of action like this is a potential learning environment. I really think that, I can tell you that my years over council, number, you know, ideas have come in and never saw the light of day. I really think that anybody that does have any type of proposal or, you know, that type of thing, but once again, we go through the process, but, you know, I think, you know, the point that I would make you, Michael, that hopefully you find some comfort, that, you know, as I mentioned, my conversation with Worth, that this is not just a cancellation, it's just a postponement, and that opportunity will be here, and as soon as we get through the budget process, which we are every day getting closer to. But the other thing is, I think that we as a body, you know, should agree that, you know, people should be allowed to bring their projects forward. But once again, I think there was a uniqueness to this one, and I didn't wanna poison the well, because once again, if three people don't like this idea for any reason due to any type of external pressure that they may be under, that kills the deal before it begins. So the thing is, so let, let, let's give, I give you my word, I heard your thing, you know, our entire thing is about the process, bringing people to the table, and get as much consensus as we can. Barbara?
I was just gonna say, I'm, the first thing I did was ask Amanda to pull the minutes of any discussion we have done on this property for the last three years. And it was advertised or on the agenda to be heard last August, but it was, this part was not heard in closed session. There was nothing in the minutes. It said that we only considered Rudy in the open. Well, you'll just have to look at the minutes, because that's the way it was, and that's what I'm going by. And that, and that the, this particular part of it would be briefed in closed session.
Exactly.
Okay.
But I, I think it's because it has to do with, with public property, and it has to do with a contract. I'm all for doing everything in the open. If we do everything in the open, like these issues we've got on the agenda in a closed session today, let's do them in the open. It's fine with me. That's, that's great. Might be the better way, then we don't have to worry about leaks. But just to be accurate as to the process that this went through, this part was not, was, was, was to be briefed in closed, but I've got a feeling that we got in the closed session, and it was determined right away that there wasn't a, a supermajority, and so that's where it just didn't go any further. But that's what happened, according to the minutes.
Okay, Michael Van Worth?
Maybe according to the minutes in public session, but you heard the manager at the last meeting tell us that we've been, we've received at least three briefings about this in closed. So for anyone to say that this is a surprise, or that they weren't aware of it, maybe the public wasn't availed to the opportunity to witness the conversation, but we certainly had them, and we had them in closed. So citing the minutes doesn't disqualify someone from the responsibility of also understanding what happens in closed.
I believe that it can be council's decision to keep minutes in closed sessions, if we decide we're going to. Well, I suggest I will bring forward that in the future, all of our closed sessions have minutes.
Okay. Worth?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I've thought a lot about this over the past week, and I've seen this, I've met Mr. Jenkins in person and received a proposal. I think we should always, as a city and as a, as a council, should be open to proposals, and that's just the way the business world is at least, and I think we should be that way. Well, it does not mean that we're gonna agree to anything. So everything that's happened over the past week, and given the importance of this property, I agree with your, your decision to postpone, at least, or defer for now, and hopefully, as I said, sooner than later. I do have a really detailed plan in front of me. It does call for a convention hotel, which we have entertained as a city for a number of years, for over 10 years, or since the convention center's been in place. We also heard from the sports center earlier this year that they need more hotel rooms to service the sports center during the summer months. We've also heard about workforce housing and J1 housing. This proposal addresses that. So I agree, given the goalpost or the need for a supermajority is really important, that I just hope that when we get to that point in the future, that we can get to nine votes on some proposal, whether it's this one or another.
But, you know, the, you know, the thing that is, you know, if we can bring this to a close, because we're gonna continue the conversation and continue to strive to improve the process, you know, I think that this project has tremendous merit, and if it is part and included and part of an overall master plan for the 19th Street corridor, it will make far better sense. So some delayed gratification is sometimes usually the way to go. But anyway, I just wanted to at least bring it out and, you know, discuss it with you, and, you know, I'll tell you what, you know, you know, I have, I have a saying, you know, let's get to yes on a lot of things, okay? All right, the next is budget reduction options.
Mayor, remember, before Kevin and I were giving this presentation, just wanna bring Council back to the reason this presentation, the city management.
Kevin and I introduced the city management's proposed budget. Council asked us to bring back an exercise that shows a sliding scale between one cent, two cent, three cent, and four cents. Before Kevin gets, go into it, we gave you a proposal, right? And this proposal could be changed, modified, in any way, shape, or form that council wants. It's really just like how the proposed budget works, it's an opportunity for council to have something to react to, so council could use that information and go from there to help make the decisions that it needs to make. Kevin, go ahead from there.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, Chris. Kevin, before you get started, we do, I spoke with Councilmember Rouse this morning, and there are five new members. Can you just give us a little explanation, and even the public? Can you explain number two in the public notice, the notice of proposed real estate, real property tax increase? And just help us understand where we start at the .9077, and then we work our way up to that proposed .99 cents, because that's important, because if new members don't understand that we actually have the opportunity to start at that .9077, that changes the conversation versus seeing that we're starting at 99 cents. Can you just give us a little context to that?
So, the public hearing ad, we're regarding the effective tax rate and the net neutral tax rate. Is that, okay. So, the background on this, and Dana from Legal can back me up if I say anything wrong, Dana. So the background on this is it's a state mandated requirement that each locality published this advertisement whenever real estate assessments grow greater than 1% year over year in terms of real assessment growth. So the state code is very specific in terms of the defining of each of those components within that public hearing ad, all the way down to the size that the public hearing ad has to be. So the whole calculation is the premise of bringing, going through the exercise of calculating of calculating what the tax rate would be to effectively have no revenue increase in form of real estate revenue growth budget to budget or for that assessment base. So the calculation is going through that exact exercise of isolating the budget base, accounting for that assessment growth, and then coming up with a percentage that that would need to then bring down the adopted, the previously adopted of the proposed tax rate down to that level to reflect no growth, uh, year over year in real estate tax revenue. So it's, that's what the calculation is and the requirements for the calculation, um, in terms of the requirement to bring it down and then build it back up. It's just a public hearing ad, uh, that we have to put out and advertise, um, per direction from the state code, but there's not actually a budget that is developed at the revenue neutral tax rate, and then it's, um, grown up from that. Does that make sense?
Yes. Follow-up. Can you just provide some clarification of what the ramifications would be if we started there versus the 99 cents? Um, because I think there's a, at least from individuals I'm hearing from, if that's the revenue neutral rate, um, there's a, just almost like an expectation that we just accept the nine cents versus, you know, now we're looking at scaling one, two, three, four cents. Um, and my initial ask, when I sat down with you and Patrick, our city manager, was five or six cents, and Patrick's response was, you know, we would have to get direction from, from the body, and he hadn't heard that. And so, once I read the, the ad and have a better understanding, I'm just, I want to make sure I can speak to my constituents in a, I guess, a, with an educated response.
Barbara? Okay, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, uh, council member, um, I've had plenty of conversations with legal, um, about this topic before. Uh, something that's required to be adopted annually, and perhaps this is another direction that you're wanting to hear, is required to be adopted annually is a tax rate. Um, the tax rate that is adopted by city councils part of the annual budget is the, basically, the approved tax rate. Um, it's not a rounding that goes into it. It's a 90, in the current year, it's 99 cents. So it's up for consideration, um, prior to the approval or adoption of the FY24 operating budget. That, another tax rate will have to be approved by city council. There's not a point in time where it comes down to automatic default. If this is what you're, um, hearing or wanting me to address, there's not an automatic default that it goes down to that level, and then it has to be incrementally built back up, um, for city council to consider. Is that? I, I knew Dana would want to come in and clarify something.
One in doubt delegate.
So there's actually two pieces of math to understand how this statute works. And so if the real estate values appreciate in such a way that it would generate 101% of last year's real estate revenues, so you just have this, this sort of, if you will, it's a door. So either your assessments push you over that number or they don't. But if they push you over that number, you have to bring it back within the 101, or you can elect to do a public hearing. If you do the public hearing, you have to follow all of the requirements in the statute for the ad. So there's four pieces. It needs to be advertised 30 days before the hearing. That hearing can't be at the same time as your regular budget hearing, which is why you have two hearings, one specific to this statute. And so, um, the revenue neutral rate actually isn't the, the trigger piece, it's really the 101% of revenue generated from the real estate from the previous year.
Okay, Barbara?
Well, one of the issues with doing what we ask you to do, uh, if you, we cut one cent, two cents, and so forth, or, or go to revenue neutral, is we're also impacting the school board budget because of the revenue formula. And so you've given us the total amount that they would have to reduce, but what we don't have is how they would do it. And so we have to remember if we are going to be going to revenue neutral budget or cutting some cents, we need to also ask the school board where they would make the cuts, so that we would know what they're going to do as well.
We did ask the school board during the process of putting that together, but we did ask them to, um, show us what cuts they would possibly make.
It's called staff. Yes.
Hey, thanks, Kev. Appreciate it. Good questions, Chris.
Okay. Mayor, vice mayor, members of council, uh, so as the city manager, um, mentioned, the request for this briefing is from direction provided by city council at the March 21st meeting. Um, get this to actually take effect. I just turned it on. Yep. There we go. All right. Thanks, Terry. Um, sorry about that. Uh, so as the city manager had mentioned, the request was made by council on March 21st to provide a scalable option as to what the potential list of reduction options would look like to, um, make reductions in the real estate tax rate on a sliding scale from one to four cents. So the purpose of the following presentation is to, um, go over a list of options for consideration, and, um, this will be done at a higher level as more detailed information about these items and proposals were included in city council's Friday packet. Uh, so the following presentation is going to get into an outline of what that would mean in terms of dollars and cents with the revenues, the rationale, and the reasoning in identifying the listed options for consideration, as well as some other considerations on other areas of the operating budget in which those reductions or reduction of the overall budget could impact, um, other areas such as debt service and fund balance calculation. And then in conclusion, we'll, uh, circle back on the plan for, to gather public input for these options for consideration. So looking at real estate tax revenue, uh, as Mrs. Henley had, um, just alluded to and pointed out, um, this is a revenue source that is shared with schools. For the city's general fund, this total revenue, local revenue source is $670 million. Um, dedications were assumed to remain intact and in place. So for example, the two and a half cent real estate tax dedication for stormwater was assumed to remain in place. So all the non-dedicated revenue sources then go, um, that are within the general fund are then shared with schools based on the school funding formula. So as you can see, um, every penny of the real estate tax rate, of the 99 cent real estate tax rate generates $7.4 million. So this table represents what the share and the impact is for both city and schools per the funding formula. So at the top row following across a one cent reduction is $3.9 million for the city, and for schools that would equal $3.4 million. And like the city manager, uh, mentioned, we have communicated these numbers and this information to schools, and we've requested their feedback and input as to what, um, these reductions would mean to their services. So some background, uh, the city has a long history of having, um, good, sound financial policies. Uh, city council has certainly given good direction over the many years, and has resulted in the city having a AAA bond rating. So as a part of that, um, in securing the AAA bond rating, the city has always had a financially sustainable operating budget. In fact, for 37 years in a row, we've received distinguished budget awards from the GFOA, or the Government Finance Officer Association, acknowledging that. Um, this is an organization that we rely on to, uh, look at best practices in the finance, government financial world. It's a collective organization of 20,000, um, uh, professionals, public sector professionals that deal in the world of budgeting and finance, and they've developed best practices for localities to follow. So we've typically relied pretty heavily on their best practices of GFOA, as well as guidance from city council and the, and the development of the annual operating budget. And so one of the things that they certainly recommend as best practice is to develop a financially sustainable operating budget. So up here is a quote from their website, which does a really good job of making a distinction between what is just a legal meeting, the legal definition of how, having a balanced budget versus what it is to have a true structurally balanced budget that is one that supports financial sustainability for multiple years into the future. So the whole premise of this exercise was really to, um, find sustainable reductions in which, um, we could identify, um, that had ongoing, sort, ongoing costs associated with it for consideration to, uh, be eliminated should the real estate tax revenue be reduced. So in looking at the operating budget, this is a little bit easier to conceptualize. Um, that would include personnel reductions, services, materials, or contractual obligations, again, things with ongoing cost. Whenever looking at the capital improvement program or the CIP, takes a little bit more thinking through as there's a need to, um, find ongoing, um, reductions. So you could certainly balance the operating budget by making reductions in year one of the CIP, which is the only year being appropriated out of the total six-year, six-year CIP program. However, what that's really going to do is create a sustainability future in the issue, and it's really, in the long term, better to be able to make consistent reductions across, um, all six years when looking for sustainable considerations. So again, um, in using that guidance, uh, from best practices as well as a historical practices that city councils approved, um, we didn't go into this exercise looking to use one-time revenue sources to backfill this loss of what's to assume to be permanent revenue reductions in the real estate tax rate. Um, also, the list of options put before city council is certainly not intended to be as a comprehensive list or the only options. There are other considerations city council could take, uh, should they so choose. For example, they could make a, um, decision to scale back on services as a public facility, reduce hours, eliminate other programs, uh, if they would like. But, um, being that we went through the budget development process with the mindset of developing a budget to maintain baseline services, we didn't really have a full comprehensive list of what those impacts would be should we, um, put other programs out there. So really, the primary options in front of city council and for the public to consider are a list of items, um, that were, it received plus-ups or additional resources in the proposed FY24 operating budget. This exercise really targets these primarily, um, and as you can see in the list and on the slide, those were categorized into these six areas. Uh, so as we go forward in the presentation, it's going to be done at a little bit higher level, talking about these categories for each of the options. Um, and then as we were going through those lists of options, we establish a prioritization of those items based on the negative impacts associated with, should they not receive additional funding or, um, level of risk associated with them. So this slide is a visual of the, um, one cent option, um, for consideration. So you can see in total, it's about $3.9 million, and if eliminated, would reduce 22.4 FTEs from the op, proposed operating budget. You can see the two largest categories of this is communication and customer service as well as maintenance. Um, and towards the bottom of the list, you can see housing, mental health services, as well as public safety, or some of the smaller, um, smaller eliminations in this one cent tier option. And the reason being that a higher priority was tried to be established for those type of critical services. However, as we move...
Rosemary?
Yes, ma'am.
...the detail, what these things would entail, what...
You got the, there's an attachment.
...of the public case in here, too.
Let's go line by line.
I, I can give some, I, if you're okay with some, some highlights, okay? Uh, so within this category, the communication and customer service line item, for example, that $1.2 million and 13, um, FTE reductions. Some notable, um, reductions that would occur with this was the initiative to add additional staff to communications office for the purpose of public engagement, um, and enhance public engagement. Also within this category would be the elimination of four FTEs, um, that were to be restored to the library to provide central library Sunday service hours again. Uh, looking at the maintenance category, um, the largest component of that $1.1 million is a reduction to the, um, to the bikeways and trail implementation CIP project that was plussed up during, it, as a part of the proposed FY24 CIP. That would be eliminating $575,000 a year from that. Um, looking at the other categories, uh, some of the other notable ones, um, were within the recruitment retention, um, employee relation business partners FTEs, or these are FTEs within the Department of Human Services that would really work to centralize some of their functions and efforts. Um, and these would be additional FTEs that are added for that purpose. So is that satisfactory for right now? Yes, ma'am.
Chris, do you have a question? Kevin, um, the previous slide you were talking about, I, trying to, I guess, maintain the standard so we can, uh, retain our AAA bond rating. In the manager's report, we had vacancy savings of 39 million, and then it had 25 million to support, uh, year two CIP. Is that, would that be something risky? That would be seen as, um, an avenue we didn't want to go down, Patrick? Or, that's first question.
So I'd be, be glad to. So the attrition savings that were calculated as part of the, um, proposed budget, so we're anticipating, um, close to 36, 35, 36 million dollars in vacancy savings. $10 million of that was used to balance the FY24 proposed operating budget, and then the remaining $25 million, $26 million was programmed in year two of the CIP. So that is what we would consider one-time savings and not necessarily something that we would recommend out of the gate from a sustainability standpoint, to utilize that, um, to replace loss, permanent loss revenue such as a tax rate reduction.
And then secondly, uh, we, tourism's the top, and that's really important to our city. PG 100629 is, uh, sports tourism infrastructure, 17 million, 550,000. What would be the impact of reducing that to 15 million, 550,000? That's 2 million. What, what would that, what kind of impact would that have?
The, that project within the CIP is, uh, a project that's primarily funded through public facility revenue bonds or a bondable revenue source. So it's not necessarily something that we had intended on putting a cash, um, or a, a Pago source of revenue to support. So, um, reducing that by $2 million would just basically deauthorize or unprogram, um, or have $2 million less in public facility revenue bonds to be, um, approved as part of the CIP.
How about the Virginia Beach Innovation Park at 12 million, 659,000? What would reducing that to seven or eight million do?
I, I would say, that project also, uh, was one that we had identified as, since it was such a large request and the need for plus-up in year one, and we didn't have that level of cash through Pago or fund balance to be able to put towards it, um, that was also one that we had identified as likely being, uh, supported through public facility revenue bonds as a bondable project.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Um, following the same theme, uh, from the previous slide, which outlined a one-cent possibility option for consideration, uh, you can see across the top that green carried over from the previous slide, so you can see that, that's $3.9 million and the elimination of 22.4 FTEs. When you get down to the lighter blue section, so you'll see slightly fewer categories, uh, but this is a list of options for consideration should city council want to reduce an additional one cent, so a two-cent accumulative, um, reduction in the real estate tax rate. Uh, you can see that the primary reduction here is in the category of maintenance. This is really primarily CIP related, um, so I'll go into a little bit more detail, uh, so the public can hear. Uh, I previously mentioned that there was a need to think through CIP reductions a little bit more, um, as you got to find ongoing reduction over the six-year period. So within this category of the CIP, uh, there's one project that has a year one cost associated with it, put on the list for consideration, and this is related to, um, e-billing. So as that's a one-time implementation cost in year one, years two through six of the CIP needed a sustainable reduction, um, to cover that lost revenue source. So the balancing tool for that, for consideration, this option, would be the Parks Infrastructure Project that recently received a plus-up by city council of $4 million, um, each year from the general fund in the current year's CIP. So that would be the balancing tool for sustainable reductions over the six-year period. Um, again, seeing that, uh, being, you'll start seeing a little bit larger numbers in the housing, mental health, and public safety category. Uh, we were able to shield that or preserve making reductions in those categories in the first option, but you start to see it grow a little bit with the elimination of the second cent, um, more specifically getting into details with the housing and mental health. So this would result in the elimination of the $250,000 contractual plus-up for homeless encampment cleanup. Um, also, um, it would eliminate the FTEs associated to be, um, added to human... Also, it would eliminate the FTEs associated to be added to human services operating budget for the reopening or goal of reopening the pathway house. So, and then in the public safety category with the 5.5 FTEs, so these are new FTEs that be added. This category is primarily related to elimination of the part-time positions to augment city hall security contract, as well as the reclassification of part-time to full-time FTEs in some public safety departments. Yes, sir?
I noticed earlier in the slides, you'd mentioned that you'd prioritize these items based on negative impact or level of risk associated with not funding. And I understand that the first, this first category of items are, I guess, carry less risk associated with not funding them cumulatively speaking?
Again, it's our proposed recommendation. Council could say that they have a different risk tolerance than we do, but based on what we did, the items in the green is the first penny to go. Those are the ones that we think they're less likely to cause operational harm. But all of these, as Kevin said, are new adds. So the city gets going without it, but these things were to enhance services. So the ones that are in green, enhance services that don't touch public safety and things like that.
Follow up question that would be these FTE counts. Where, I'm assuming each of these FTE counts meet the full level of the ask, right? So they could, I guess, be reevaluated to maybe strip out one or two FTEs here or there depending on what particular project it is?
If city council would like to slice and dice any of these proposals, we can certainly get with the departments to get the impact of adding one as opposed to three FTEs for the human services, or excuse me, human resources proposal that I was just talking about.
Thank you.
So in total, cumulative between the one first cent and the additional one cent, or for total two cent reduction, you can see the cumulative reduction for the city would be about $7.8 million or 35.97 FTEs would be eliminated from the original proposed operating budget. Following the same format, the next slide's what it would look like for a three cent reduction. So you can see the first cent across top in green, the second cent in blue, and the third cent category for consideration would be highlighted there in orange. So you can see that this category really is made up primarily of two options for consideration or two categories, and that's in the category of maintenance as well as public safety. So for some context is what this would look like. So the maintenance project eliminated to, for consideration to eliminate in year one the CIP is the $1.2 million plus-up for the Little Island Pier maintenance and rehab effort. And then the ongoing reduction in the out years, since that's one time, the ongoing reduction in the out years would be the Parks Infrastructure Project. So it's important to note that should all three options be taken into account and implemented by city council, that would restore the Parks Infrastructure Project to just under $1 million a year, which would be where it was a couple of years ago prior to city council taking the direction and initiative to plus that up to $4 million per year. Looking at public safety, so this category deserves a little more narrative as what these include. So within that public safety category, the bulk of those FTEs is related to the removal of the 11 police officers, sworn police officers to be reinstated that were previously reclassified over the last couple of years to civilian positions to staff such as the Real-Time Crime Center. But in addition to that, some of those initiatives for consideration are really just to freeze proposals currently in place. So what that would look like is, for example, we're on the verge of rolling out e-ticketing, but there's a need for $600,000 of ongoing software costs that was to be included as part of the proposed budget. So if that were to be frozen and not rolled out, then that could generate $600,000 savings in that category. Also for consideration could just be the freezing of the phasing in of the Sheriff's Body Warn Camera Program. City council gave direction to move forward with the first phase, but there's an additional ongoing cost with that. In addition to that, it could just be a decision be made not to roll out phase two of that and the extra 280 body worn cameras, which ultimately could also come with an additional cost down the road should the Commonwealth Attorney's Office find that those are in fact creating an increased workload for them. So in total, the cumulative between those three cents is the elimination of $11.8 million or 52.9 FTEs. And the fourth option city council requested is what would it look like to have a four-cent real estate tax reduction? So building off the previous three, the four cent really gets into a category, a heavy reduction in maintenance with a little bit in public safety. But the context to provide with these is these will really require some future policy decisions and discussions to take place as it, for example, with the public safety one, that would essentially eliminate the contractual arrangement or the funding for the contract to provide city hall security services. And we would need to re-engage conversations with the police department and sheriff's office and perhaps resort back to the way security was provided to city hall prior to the contract that's put in place. Within the maintenance category here, this also does include some CIP. And ultimately, if this was done in the out years, the balancing tool again would be the Parks Infrastructure Project, which would basically bring it down to zero, which we would then need to have a discussion about potentially finding a way or seeing if it was possible to resort back to the prior practice, which would be looking to use the open space dedication to cover both site acquisition as well as park maintenance. Again, option for consideration, not necessarily a recommendation going forward to solve that issue should city council move this direction, but just putting it out there as would need to be part of the conversation for consideration. Some other areas, and again, that is not intended to be the only options. As being presented, city council could certainly pick and choose and establish their own priority list based on these. But some other things for consideration, another sustainable option for city council's consideration could be in the form of compensation. So for context, every 1% equals roughly $5 million in the general fund. So should they decide to reduce or make a reduction in the compensation, that could be certainly a sustainable reduction. Another sustainable reduction, however, the impacts are not fully known, is in looking at EMS. Something to include in the proposed operating budget is an increase of 38 paramedics and AEMTs totaling $2.5 million to support and augment the reduction in volunteerism and what we're experiencing in our EMTs or EMS services. Also for consideration, not listed up there, but could be the $700,000 grant being provided to the Rescue Squad Foundation. For the sheriff's office, they had demonstrated a need or expressed need for $2 million increase transfer from the general fund throughout the budget process to reinstate centralized booking. And without that increase, they would have needed to eliminate 22 FTEs and not no longer provide that service as centralizing, centralized booking. It's certainly a possibility. The city used to do it prior to having the agreement with the sheriff's office. However, it would certainly have an impact on the police department and tying up police officers as they would need to stay behind as to do the centralized booking process. And then that last option is really just some information there. These are options council could consider. However, it's really just delaying the inevitable, or if you will, kicking the can down the road. And this is delaying the adding of FTEs for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office totaling $1.1 million. Those 12 FTEs obviously are associated with the body worn camera program and the mandated requirement that the city provides so many staff to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office per body worn camera. And then the last one there, the computer replacement program plus-up of $1.3 million. This is a wave of computer replacements that are coming as next year will be five years from all, from the time that the city had to purchase a large amount of computers in a short amount of time for all the employees that were displaced from building two, and the replacement of those computers coming up in the next fiscal year. And IT would certainly see maintaining old outdated computers on the city's network as being a cybersecurity risk. To Mrs. Henley's point, we have a slide in here for Virginia Beach City Public Schools. We have provided them the information. They have not had a chance to determine what those options for consideration would look like to balance against the reductions. However, they have noted that they placed heavy amount of emphasis of input resources and implementation of the market salary study, as well as they made an effort, concerted effort to increase their Pago contribution to the CIP in an amount of $2 million. So it's likely that elimination of local revenue sources would impact their ability in those two areas. Something that is not known, though, is that the state budget's not finalized. So we certainly don't know what the impact the state revenue is going to have on schools' operations. It could work that by the time the state's finally adopted a budget, which we believe is going to be in the month of June, schools could see additional increase of state revenue offsetting a portion of this reduction, or it could work the opposite direction. Sticking with the theme of revenues that are being monitored, obviously state revenue, just mentioned that for the schools. Something else that we're watching from the city side is 599 funding. So this is a direct contribution the state gives localities that operate and have established police departments. So we'll be looking to monitoring that to see if there's an increased contribution in that. And then on the local side, we'll be looking to monitoring B-Pole revenues or business professional occupational license. So this is actually due in the month of March. It's a revenue that's due late in the fiscal year, and so we're really don't have a good sense of where it's landing or trending in the current year. However, we now are starting to see the information come in. It's not quite finalized. It should be later this month, but we'll have a sense of how we're tracking with that. And we're certainly curious about this because this is a category or a revenue source that received mid-year tax rate modifications. And so we'll be interested to see if we're trending correctly in our FY24 projection of this. Just for situational awareness, just thinking about the implications of other areas of the operating budget that are impacted whenever the baseline reductions or growth in revenues are reduced. So that's debt metrics and the general fund calculation. So in looking at the debt metrics, so it's really a numerator-denominator calculation, right? So if debt service is staying the same amount, but the overall budget shrinks, then that debt service represents a higher percentage of the overall budget. And so just to be mindful of that over time is, you know, the debt metrics are predicated on overall sustained growth based on Davenport's presentation to city council, and that was built in their baseline assumptions. And it's certainly small, but just wanted to put that out there for situational awareness that each one cent reduction ultimately results in a 0.02% increase in the debt service to general government expenditure metric.
Chris, do you have a question?
Kevin, that's a great point. I was just going to reference that presentation from January 27th from Davenport. On page 315, the debt service by fund, overall, it looks like it's a 1% increase. However, most, there's 10 categories, general fund, school operating fund, parks and recreation SRF, tourism investment program, agriculture reserve program, central business district south TIF, open space SRF, water and sewer enterprise fund, parking enterprise fund, stormwater utility enterprise fund. Nine out of those 10 categories, we chose a strategy to either remain the same or as a negative. However, the tourism investment program had a 39.2% increase or an additional $11 million towards debt service. Can you help us understand that, especially as we opened up this conversation talking about the budget process, Atlantic Park? Can you give us some?
I can. So council member, the city, and if you'll allow me to get a little bit in weeds on this, the city's debt repayment structure is fairly aggressive as we pay level principal and retire. So we're really aggressive in retiring our debt. So a majority of those funds that you mentioned, what we're seeing is a reduction of the debt service in an amount equal to base the, what the debt service is to come online. And so as we're retiring it, it's coming back, and it's resulting in very little growth budget to budget in the debt service. The one exception to that is the TIP fund. Even though there is a reduction in debt service coming in the foreseeable future with the retirement of debt for the convention center, something that we're anticipating are some issuances within the next year related to the Atlantic Park project. And so that's going to be a reason for the increase in the debt service for that fund.
So reducing that would have a serious impact if we decided to pay less on that debt? Because the Davenport report, Patrick, and you can help, but we, I think we had a vote where we were considering increasing our debt capacity, our ability to?
You just changed it, so council changed the debt metrics. We didn't increase, we just changed the debt metrics, which in essence, based on several assumptions, which are changing now if council moves in the direction of reducing taxes, created extra capacity. But council didn't actually take a vote to increase the debt limit. It just, it changed the metrics which could enhance capacity, but depending on what happens here, it could bring down capacity.
Correct. Thank you, Kevin.
Yes, sir. And so the last slide before questions and comments and discussion is budget timeline. Certainly something city council has seen. A few notable changes are highlighted in red or red font there, including today's date, which we would like to take or get discussion or direction from council about taking this list of options for consideration and posting it online, as well as putting it into the Balancing Act tool that the city has. So this is a tool that we've modified to be specific to these lists of options for consideration, as well as selection for residents in the community to be able to opt whether they want to make a one cent reduction, two cent reduction, three cent reduction. And then they could make a choice of these categories or these options for consideration to balance against that. So what we would like to do is get that out and open and posted today, allow that information to be collected and gathered, and do a report back to city council on that in a future Friday packet on April 21st. And then that'll be after the first public hearing. And then at the conclusion of the next public hearing on April 25th, again, in that Friday packet, capture all that information and feedback from the residents to get to city council to get in a Friday packet ahead of their budget reconciliation weekend and workshop on May 2nd.
What also may not be clear on this slide is that the communications office, after this meeting, unless council says otherwise, will be sending out all the information regarding this presentation and that list to the public via social media, email, listserv, and the other material to make sure that the public can have that information in time and in preparation for your budget hearings as well.
Any other questions or discussion?
Yes, so thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Patrick. I met with them at the end of last week because I had a series of questions and needed help and just to process the budget and some of our options. And so one of the bigger questions for me was around impact. So with every cent reduction, what's the impact on city services? What's the impact on schools? What's the impact on how our government is able to function? And a lot of emails that we've received have been, the majority of emails have been sort of on, you know, reduce the tax assessment in real estate or fully fund the school. So that's been, you know, the options, the bigger options that we're weighing. And so, and again, I'm thinking about impact. So in my conversation, so I'm asking you, Kevin, and thank you for walking me through it, will you share with the public what you shared with me that for some of the individuals who are asking for tax relief, it doesn't account for every person, but for some individuals, the concern is on fixed income, which is I'm on fixed income, I'm senior citizen, and I'm unable to afford an increase. But the city has options or grants available to help individuals in those cases?
There, the city has several tax relief programs that are currently in place. So it, I think I've spoken several times to council about the growth in the mandated tax relief program for disabled veterans. That one's mandated, and city council doesn't have any input or ability to modify that program at all. However, there's a locally administered program that city council does have discretion on making modifications to. Mrs. Henler, Councilwoman Henley spearheaded a committee several years ago to revisit and revamp the program parameters. And so basically, it's a program for individuals 65 or older with, that can demonstrate income below a certain threshold, then they can then qualify for tax exemption or tax relief up to a percentage. It's a tiered percentage, and it's based on their income thresholds. So I think the maximum of the range to receive up to 20% tax relief is $75,000. So I think the maximum of the range to receive up to 20% tax relief is $75,000, $76,000. And then there's a scalable option all the way down to, I believe it's in the mid 40s for up to 100% and $74,000 for the 20% option. And what's the minimum? Sorry. And so.
45 or 100?
Forty-five. Forty-five thousand for 100% relief. So that is certainly an option. That's something that's administered by the commissioner of revenues office where they capture the information and the request and the application process from residents. So it is a program that has seen growth and level of participation over the years.
Amelia?
Thanks again, Kevin. I wanted to ask, as you've mentioned for the reductions, take for example, the communications group. If we're looking at doing those reductions over a year or two, have you considered coming back to putting those back in, the inflation rates or anything like that?
I, I have not. In terms of, you know, if they were to come out and if it were to be a reduction, it's not an exercise that we went through to then take that out of, basically, I think what you're getting at is, well, if we don't do it now, you would buy it back at a future late rate, future point in time, and it would have a higher dollar value. We didn't go through that exercise for this. It was, this was just an exercise of identifying the, what's included in the proposed budget, got additional resources put towards it, and what that would be needed on dollar for dollar to get it back into a balanced, sustainable position.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Kevin. Thank you very much for putting this together for us and for being available to answer questions along the way as well. I, I just, and I know we all feel this, so I'm just going to say it out loud for all of us. I am, and I know we are extremely sensitive to how, what we're talking about is going or could potentially impact schools. And I think that, you know, I think, I think we need to be very careful because they put forward a budget to us that prioritize building replacements and prioritize their personnel, which we've seen from the, from the salary study that, that we're really lagging in terms of mid-year teaching professionals and in terms of retention. And I think it's, I think it's just worth noting that, that whatever we do, and I know we do have a revenue sharing formula, but this is our, a decision of our making here and not theirs. So I would like for us to, to think about, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it holding them completely harmless from any of these options, but I, but I really, really think we need to be working very closely with the schools on minimizing any potential impact to them because I just, I just don't think that's right. And, and I do realize that we have a lot of really tough choices in here, and, and I've got to find out a little bit more about some of these line items. So, and I'd appreciate you being available to talk through that. The other point I think I made, and this is kind of a follow-on to what council member Ralph was talking about, is, is yes, we are hearing a lot from people who are on fixed incomes. The real estate tax rate obviously affects those people and people who own property. I know we had discussed at least preliminarily a couple of weeks ago about thinking around ways where we could realize some savings, you know, for folks who, we can make sure that the people who really need the help are getting it, who might not necessarily be real estate owners, and where those real estate taxes reductions might not necessarily be trickling down to them. And maybe some of those revenue sources aren't as impactful to schools perhaps as a real estate tax rate. So I, I really appreciate what you have in front of us, and I look forward to discussing it more, but I just, I wanted to say those couple of things.
Okay, Patrick, and then Chris.
Vice Mayor, I'm with Sean. And Kevin, we might want to chat after our speed, but we're going through that exercise and new, and new lives and council compared as well. It's to kind of show the various different options, like personal property, that some of that could look like schools would be impacted by it, because schools want to share that revenue as well. Unless council decided that they truly want to open schools, but then they'll put more cuts on the city side as well. But we are going through that exercise. It gets really complicated to figure out where to get compensation or relief on those, but we're working on a way to articulate that to city council. Kevin, I don't know if there's any?
No, that's separate.
And the budget is a reduction in the personal property, 15%.
So that's, that's for the current year, Vice Mayor. So the, the, the request from the commissioner of revenue to establish fair market value is based on the current year and what they're looking at in the current year. In doing some environmental scanning of other localities, I can say that I found that we're one of three localities that have done that in the current year, with another couple of localities not doing fair market valuation in the current year. However, going forward, I don't know in FY24's operating budget that anybody is looking to make additional adjustments as the market's anticipated to have normalized by that point in time. So they're not preemptively reducing any amount of personal property revenue in the development of their 24 budgets.
Okay, we got Chris?
Kevin? Then Michael. Patrick, thank you for the presentation today. This is tough. You know, we have to make some tough decisions as a body. First question is, you know, does this body want to provide tax relief for the citizens? As Josh indicated, the schools have to make some hard choices. They prioritize building these new schools. And we did just sign off on $48 million in reversionary funds that they applied to the CIP to help fund these schools. And our citizens are making sacrifices. And I wanted to kind of put a face to the dilemma that teachers are in. We're new. We're, we're the council of this year, so, but the councils of the past and leadership in the past and decisions that we've made in the past impact the decisions we have to make today. I received this email. I'm just going to read a snippet because I think the citizens are crying in the streets. I teach economics and personal finance at First Corning High School. My wife, who is also a teacher, and I were just blessed with a little girl in June of 2022. We want to continue to grow our family, but finances are a real concern for us. When I began teaching in 2012, I had a salary of $40,000. However, after 12 years in the school system, my salary is $54,000. That may seem like a big increase. However, I did the calculations, and approximately 2,900 of that goes to my VRS contributions, while in 2011, it was only approximately $400. That is a 21% increase just right there, not counting the added cost to our insurance premiums and other cost of living increases as well. I did an inflation calculation examining inflation from 2011 to 2023, and it said this $40,000 in 2011 is equivalent in purchasing power to about $53,497.17. Today, an increase of $13,497.17 over 12 years. The dollar had an average inflation rate of 2.45% per year between 2011 and today, producing a cumulative price increase of 33.74%. In closing, this means that effectively speaking, I have taken a pay cut for working for this school system for 12 years. We have some hard choices to make, and these teachers are torn between living here and earning a good wage.
Good, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, and thank you, Councilman Taylor. It's not just teachers, and I, and I appreciate the point that you made, Mr. Taylor. It's not just teachers. It's, it's every resident in Virginia Beach. Kevin, Mr. Shadler, I want to thank you for this report. And I'd like to politely respectfully ask if we could see more options. In a 2.5 plus billion dollar proposed budget, there have to be more options than mental health and public safety and variety of these other things. There, I just, I can't believe there's not. And I think based on what, and I think you did a great job. I don't want, please don't take this as a criticism. I'm just looking for more information because I think coming out of the retreat, we all are on the same page about some of the priorities that this council has identified for the community that include mental health, that include housing. So including these things on the list for contemplation is, I don't think is appropriate. And I'd like to see more options. And I'm sure that, that there have to be more options than, than just this list that we have before us today.
Good, Patrick.
Yeah, sorry. And, you know, as Mr. Taylor pointed out, residents are getting it from every side, from increased cost of living that have to, that have to do with the obvious inflationary environment, with kind of a shaky economic environment in general, with, and I don't know what everyone else's sort of, you know, portfolios look like, but the stock market isn't performing as it, as it has in the last 10 years, last five years. So everywhere we look, there are increased expenses. And I think we have a responsibility to find efficiencies that provide relief. And, and yes, education is identified as one of our number one priorities. And I, and I, and I think Councilman Shulman really did point out, when you said you speak for, you understand that we all share the goal of having a great public education system. And I agree with that. I also think everyone, including the schools, should look for, for ways to find efficiencies to reduce the cost of living and to promote affordability in the city. And I, and I think it's really reckless for us to contemplate a budget that doesn't include some of that. And I really want to set the stage for that because I'm worried, you know, to what, what Councilmember Ralph pointed out, that we're headed down the track of tax relief or fund the schools. And that's not the choice. This is not a binary choice. Shouldn't be. We need to do, rise to the occasion and do better than that, and find a way to all identify some efficiencies so that we can make a great quality of life and an affordable environment for Virginia Beach residents that continues to place our city as a regional and statewide and national leader in best management practices and in quality of life.
Good, Patrick, and then Barbara.
It's Amanda. Vice Counsel, just to clarify again, what's presented to you are enhancements. No, no employees, no existing programs are tied to that. If we want to go through the exercise of getting more cuts, we can, and we absolutely will. But to go further means we'll be looking at existing programs with existing employees. Employees aren't a greatest proportion of our budget as well. So if we bring more options beyond what's there, we'll be talking about cuts and possibly laying off staff, or not even necessarily laying off staff, but moving staff out of positions into other funded positions in enterprise funds or something like that. But it could likely mean that we're asking to cut existing programs and putting staff in furlough or layoff positions if we go any further than what we've presented here. All of these are enhancements with no FTEs or no dollars that's currently being spent right now. These are all new plus-ups, right? But if we go further than that, we'll be, and we can, we can, but we'll be going through an exercise where we'll be bringing likely telling employees, your program's getting cut, and you may not work for the city or not work for the city in the capacity that you typically have worked in the city for.
Barbara?
I think he just said what I was going to say, that what we have been given are new expansions. And so we're not impacting an official position now. But if we do what you say here on slide six, that these aren't the only options, for example, other things that we might consider, our closure of a public facility, reduced hours or elimination of city programs, then we're talking about probably layoffs. And in all my years here, we have never done layoffs. And I don't want that word to go out anywhere because I certainly don't think we want to go to that extent. So what, what you've tried to do with these are try to affect things that are not affecting existing programs and existing positions.
Correct.
And so we're looking essentially at what you have used this year to enhance some things. But to go further, that's what I just wanted to clarify. We would be looking at things like, instead of opening the libraries back on Sunday afternoons, maybe closing library hours at every other places or so forth. And anytime we do that, we're reducing positions. And, okay, so just want everyone to know what we're talking about here.
And just, these are majority 98, 99%, but there was a need to identify some existing. And so it, and there was precedent for this whenever we went through this exercise at the beginning of the pandemic, the supplement for state employees. That is one of these. It's currently being provided, but it certainly could be an option for consideration should city council want to go that direction. It's not saying that it has to go that direction, but it's out there for consideration. So there was a need to already, just to generate this list, go into a little bit of an existing initiative and program currently underway that would go away. But as the city manager said, to go further down, it, it would get to that level.
Good, Michael.
Just to provide greater clarification before we start talking about the L-word. Again, I can't be convinced in a $2.5 billion, approximately 1. something billion dollar operating budget, that every program, that every FTE is essential or couldn't be redirected, efficiencies created. Just because something exists doesn't mean it can't be recalibrated, tuned up, created, chiseled down to be more efficient. To, we can't, I don't think anyone has forgotten the reason we're here is to serve the public. So, you know, I don't want to be threatened either with, you know, becoming a boogeyman, talking about the L-word, when what I, what I'm asking here for is, is for, let's get our pencils out, like they say, sharpen our pencils, and let's look at all the options. Because I, I just, I, I don't have anything that comes to mind. I think that's, I don't, I don't have the full scope of that. That's what we're, that's what I'm personally asking you all to do. But it's just real simple. It's that not, there's no way that everything we do is working great or is the best use of resources. So, you know, what could we look at?
Anybody else at this point?
I think we are all sitting here playing a hand of cards that was dealt to us. And we have to play the, the hand of the cards that have been dealt to us. We're coming out of a COVID that went into a recession. And it's a, you know, a lot of, it's a thing for tough choices philosophically and everything else. You know, the thing is that, you know, you know, Michael has a degree of thing, you know, because I know some places use kind of a balanced scorecard or post that evaluates programs, you know, by priorities and everything. And by doing that, you can find some redundancies and obviously to be more efficient. You know, schools, you know, once again, with all the state mandates on them, they had, they're compelled to have huge central office bureaucracies. But, you know, if things can be retooled there, you know, I think, once again, to Chris's point, let's get the emphasis in, you know, in the classroom, you know. But once again, you know, it's going to take a lot of creative thinking. But I think in the long run, hopefully, that once we make it through this year, and, you know, this is, I think in a lot of ways, an anomaly year, you know, given our circumstances. You know, economic development is going to be the key to the future, creating the new revenue streams and things that we're going to do. So let's, you know, just assume right now, we're kind of treading water in a riptide. And, but once again, you know, hopefully, let's be positive about the future and use our, your wherewithal to develop those new regular streams that'll take off the burden. Anybody else?
I would like to say to the, the next eight presenters that are department heads and division heads, come on down. We look forward to hearing from you. We look forward to hearing from you. Unless you're in this. And I see the chief judge back there and I think he's next.
How do you like your computer?
Kevin, thank you.
Yes, sir.
You take your Kevlar off and go on.
Issue it to them.
Like, no, that's why I know.
How are you? Good to see you, my friend. Hey, Mr. Manager, we are ready to move on to the city manager's briefing.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at this time, Chief Judge James C. Lewis will provide an update on the proposed Virginia Beach Circuit Court budget.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Mr. City Manager, Mr. City Attorney, thank you for having us. After I got here at what I thought was on time, but I was allowed to sit and listen to the last hour or so of this discussion. And after the magnitude of the issues that this body must grapple with pursuant to that presentation, what we have for you this afternoon is relatively small potatoes. There were three items on our budget request that drew attention. One of them seems to be much ado about nothing, and that's a postage increase that was, is required by the significant upturn in the number of jury trials that we are being required to accommodate. I think that increase was in the neighborhood of $7,000, give or take. The second item is salary increases for our law clerks to bring the money that we offer these young men and women into a competitive playing field with those folks in the community that we compete with for getting good talent out of the law schools. We are significantly behind the curve. We're significantly behind the curve in what the private sector pays these kids. We are significantly behind the curve in what the Commonwealth attorneys pays. We are behind the curve in what the city attorney pays. The last item on our wish list are, it's approximately $35,000 than it is to upgrade the furniture or the furnishings in the circuit court. We occupy two floors of the judicial center and both of them have large common areas that are now equipped with the furniture that was placed there when the building was originally constructed in the 90s. And it is, I won't say it's embarrassing, but it is in dire need of replacing in the number that we are requesting specifically. Mr. Entwistle is coming up with $35,324, which would go a long way in bringing our common areas in the Virginia Beach Circuit Court up to modern standards. Presentation is short. It was intended to be short, but I'm, I'm delighted to answer any questions that anyone may have about these requests or about the operation of the circuit court in general.
Any questions for Judge Lewis?
What is the salary increase for law clerks that you're requesting?
You know, I apologize. I don't have the numbers. They might, they might be here, but we're paying them now in the mid 50s and the competitive numbers are in the low 70s. And we have four law clerks and they are, they're on annual, they're annual employees.
Okay, anybody else? Judge Lewis, just want to thank you for what you do and what your group does. And much thanks.
Well, you're very welcome. I will tell you, there are seven of us and we are all delighted with what we do for a living and for this city. Thank you for your time.
Rosemary.
And we, we really, this council really has tried to pay a lot of attention to the courts and the security fence for the judges.
Yes, ma'am, that is not lost on any of us and we are very grateful.
The $10 million for those escalators.
I plead the fifth on that. I had nothing to do with it. But that was, that was a left turn that none of us wanted nor did any of us see coming.
We did that last year and we're not struggling with it. Anna Patrick and I looked at each other last year and he says, do we really have to do that? And I said, we need to go ahead, bite the bullet and get this done. And I'm so glad we're not grappling with that this year.
So are we.
Anyway, the, the council really does care about the safety and, and all that you do for, for law and order in our city. I'll let you know how grateful we are.
We are all aware of it and we are very grateful for all your help and support. Any, any, any other questions I can, can address for?
Okay, thanks a bunch.
Thank you all.
Okay, welcome, Ruth.
Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wilson and council members. It's good to be with you this afternoon. I'm going to talk to you about Department of Housing and Neighborhood Preservation's budget. I will not be quite as short as the judge before me. So my department has five different divisions under it. We have 94 FTEs. I also have 10 contractual employees, total of 104 in my department. And you can see the total budget there is $42,743 and 852. The divisions are divided up. I have rental housing, which is our housing choice voucher, section eight program, as well as other subsidies, federal subsidies. Homeless services is services provided for those experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. Code enforcement, of course, does all of the work around ensuring that we are meeting maintenance codes for the city, both residential and commercial. The director's office has, we just oversee all of the work that happens and a plethora of federal dollars that come in. And then housing development does our affordable housing creation as well as working with persons in our community that need assistance for rehabilitation. We have a program called Owner Occupied Rehab. And the city council, you funded something two years ago, I believe it was, to help those that could not get funded in our federal contingency areas. So that is our program there. So here's our programmatic budget. You can see, and I want to make this really clear, that the majority of our budget is not, is federal dollars coming in. We only have a very small percentage that is from the city. But you can see rental housing, which is our housing choice voucher, is our biggest, is our biggest budget numbers there, 28 million there, 67% of our budget. The second biggest is homeless services. And then the director's office, that budget is high there at 8% because the HOPLA grant comes through my division, my director's office, and that is a large grant of $2,676,000. Next, I wanted to show you the money by revenue source. So here it's important to see that 63% of our budget for my department comes out of the HCB program or the federal programs. But additionally, 77% is all federally funded. If you add the state and then the other revenue, 81% of my budget comes from non-city funded revenue sources. So less than 20% I receive from general fund dollars in my, in my department. Here's our department operating budget. And the increase is mainly here, that 11% increase in general fund has to do mainly with salary and benefits increases. There were some property maintenance and abatement increases, city garage and fuel. And then there was an increase in HRC operations costs as well as maintenance. We added an increase in prevention and diversion funds. I'll go over with you in a few minutes. And that small increase of the housing choice voucher program there came from the federal government. That came straight to us, that 3.26%. So the total increase of our budget is just a little under 4%. So trends and issues that are impacting what's going on in my department have to do with things that you as a body have been talking about for months. And I appreciate your support and consideration in looking at issues around housing. So there's continued housing instability following the pandemic. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a few minutes, about prevention and diversion funds. There's also an increased need for funds to address people that are experiencing homeless. We want to keep them from experiencing it. And then, of course, there's lack of affordable housing units that you guys are very aware of. The major budget changes are, I'm looking, I've requested a conversion of six longtime contractual positions to an FTE, but it is a small cost to the city. It's only $12,680. The rest of that will be funded through our federal partners that help us fund that. So it will not impact the general fund budget at all. The biggest ask is for the $100,000 in homeless prevention and diversion funds. And I wanted to give you some data about that to know why that request is on the table. We served 895 persons from July 1 through December 31 of this year, so the first six months of the year. And 45% of them received financial assistance and were prevented from experiencing homelessness. 49% exited to family and friends, 4% entered homelessness, 1% entered an institution and 1%, we didn't have the data on them. So you can see that we've done a really good job with our prevention dollars to keep people housed or sheltered, and that's what's important. The total amount of financial assistance that we put out just in the first six months of this fiscal year was $282,288. So we do have a $250 allocation of ARPA funds towards this money, but we will spend that if we trend the same way that we did this year in the first six months of the year, which is why the request for the $100,000 of general fund is requested here for that. So just to finish out and talk about our enhancements and what we have done, I wanted to share with you that the department did expand the program this year at the oceanfront to include an inspector, a code inspector, and also Outreach has a team that's down at the oceanfront, Monday through Friday, and sometimes on the weekend in the summer when the, there's more people down there. So that has been a positive impact this year. You know, the housing study is underway. We've had eight public meetings, nine stakeholder focus groups. We closed down the survey on April 5th and we look to have a strategy development report between June to August. But there will be council one-on-one presentations or sessions to meet with you from Mel Jones here shortly in the next month. We hope to start it hopefully by the end of April or May. There's Mother's Day in there and a college graduation at Virginia Tech that kind of plays into that, that calendar. Again, I mentioned the owner occupied rehab program. You can see we've tracked well this year. We have four projects that are completed, two are in progress, and we have 32 households now on the waiting list. A year ago, actually closer to 18 months ago, we actually had nobody waiting on the waiting list. So we've done a good job of marketing this program to help people to rehab their homes that really need it. We've, the nonprofits that are under my jurisdiction for the funding that from ARPA for the city, 51% of that funding has been expended and so we're tracking really well for that. And then the housing, emergency housing vouchers, which is funding that we have gotten from, from the federal dollars. We have 35 vouchers that are almost leased up and we started the program expansion of an additional 65 from ARPA funding. But we want to make sure that everybody gets leased up first before we start with the new program. And of course, opportunities for affordable housing development and preservation. We're looking forward to your input and your guidance once the study is complete and for your priorities for us. And so that concludes my report. If you have questions for me or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
For the report and for what you and your department do each and every year across our city. In early March, I believe it was announced a federal government program for affordable housing across the Commonwealth of Virginia, an amount of $98 million. And I believe part of that is coming to our city. Is that in your report or is that allocated at this point?
So, so no. People are assuming that that money is coming to us, but we do not meet the criteria for that money. It's not coming through us in the city. I will get that information to you. I don't have the date in my head. I can provide you with that and I'll provide it to, to council so everybody can have that information.
Thank you, Barbara.
We still have homelessness, but you all have done such a great job. I mean, before we had all that we have now, I mean, it was very different. And yes, we do still have a problem, but you all are doing a great job. And I just want to tell you how, how good it is to know you're there. We have people that you're helping and you've got a great report. But you keep talking about the ARPA money. I'm assuming that's the American Rescue Plan money.
Yes, ma'am.
And what worries me is we don't have that.
Yeah.
And I think that's what's happening in, in this budget, that we don't have that. So are you having contingency plans for when that is gone and how we're going to be able to keep going?
So, no, ma'am. At this point, we, we have money through, for some programs through 2023 and for others through 2026. And so the EHV program that I mentioned goes to 2026. We have some time with that. And so we're hopeful that we can get as many people housed as we can during that time season and help people maintain housing. And that's the key. So once they get housed and they can afford it on their own, we have case management that works with them to make sure that they can maintain that housing. It's a short-term subsidy. The EHP program is a three-year subsidy. And so what needs to happen is they need to get into a house that they can manage on their own to maintain it. And so we'll have case management to help ensure that that happens. And that's, that's our goal. If we can maintain people in the house that they get, once the subsidy ends, they'll have three years to, to increase their employment and be able to manage it on their own. So that's a contingency.
That's our challenge too.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Amelia?
Yes, thank you so much, Ruth, for your presentation and the work you're doing. We have somehow the public really confused over that. Housing vouchers, federal housing, what we've just mentioned, that we didn't get anything out of that. But yet in our budget, it shows federal housing. So first of all, can you explain why or why we're in the situation we are in not getting that money? And then I have a second question.
So we get the housing choice voucher through HUD that comes straight to us as an appropriation. We are not a public housing authority. And so what, that's the difference. We are a housing agency. And because we're a housing agency, it comes straight to us through the city and not through the appropriation through the housing authority. That's the only difference. It's not, doesn't mean we don't get the money. What it means is we don't get it that way. And so that's the, the very foundational explanation of that.
That helps because many people say, well, we're coming from Norfolk or wherever we're coming and everybody has public housing assistance. We don't understand that part of Virginia. So I'm glad you explained.
Yes, we don't have public housing in the city of Virginia Beach. We do scattered site with partnerships through mostly the biggest providers, VBCC, Virginia Beach Community Development Corporation.
Right, I once served on that.
Correct.
The second thing, we have where my district, District 4.
Yes, ma'am.
Had almost completed 400 units in Burton Station. And already people are passing along, they go to see the fire station, to see these humongous buildings, then I get a note. I'm telling my family we're going to move there and maybe get a one bedroom. And a one bedroom is $1,740, one bedroom. So they're thinking this is affordable, but these families is not. So I started asking in economic development, what's the rate? It is market rate. How come people are assuming maybe it's? How come people are assuming maybe it's affordable, maybe because where it's being built? Or are you all going to have some of those, like a mixed use of a few people? Because Burton Station is, you know, historically African-American community, some of the older ones would like to maybe come back, but they went through sticker shock.
Yeah. Are you talking about the project that we're helping to fund through Angela Whitehead's program? No, that's the seniors. Yeah. So this other project, I do not believe the city has put any funding in it. I am not aware of if they have, how many of the units are affordable or market rate. We will check on that, but I thought when you mentioned the 400 units in Burton Station, it is, yeah.
Oh, no. They have like 40 units, and then they about commit, that's a whole different number to 400.
Yeah. I'll check on that and get back to you on that.
Okay. Thank you so much for all you do.
Sure.
Anybody else?
No. We often get asked what we're doing for homeless, and I'll tell you what, it's obviously, we're doing quite a bit, and I think we're ahead of the curve in, you know, so many ways. And, you know, this is a regional priority also. The Hampton Roads Planning Commission, you know, does have a task force on this, and Chris Taylor is helping out with a number of, you know, the other folks in the neighborhood. We went to visit some housing in Chesapeake not too long ago, but it's a combined effort. But we got to be very, very proud of the way, you know, we are full-scale addressing, you know, the resources and the empathy and compassion that you and your staff use. For that, we thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And the Public Works Director will give council an update on the proposed fiscal year '24 budget for the Public Works Department.
Welcome, LJ.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. It's my privilege this afternoon to give you an update on the proposed budget for the The organizational summary for the Department of Public Works is 22 different divisions. We didn't list out all 22 divisions. It's a long list, probably take up three slides. Suffice to say, the Department of Public Works is a big organization, almost 1,000 employees, and with an annual budget of, a proposed annual budget of 228, almost $229 million. That funding comes in a variety of sources. Comes from, of course, general fund, stormwater utility, and waste management making up the largest chunks. But of course, we have grant funds, parks and rec offsets, shown differently in a table format here. This helps illustrate a little bit about the changes in each individual funding source. On the general fund, you can see an increase of about 7.24% overall, increase of about 5.61% from last year's budget. I would like to point out that in the general fund, $49.8 million of that 104 million is urban maintenance funding. So makes up about 47.7%. That's money that we receive from the Commonwealth for maintenance of roads and comes from our gas taxes. So that is not entirely tax-driven, or rather, real estate tax-driven. The department has a number of initiatives that are underway. I wanted to highlight a couple of them. Technology has been a continuous struggle for the Department of Public Works. We had at one time over 100 different applications, spreadsheets, databases that we were trying to operate. That's a, it's a huge ask. It's for IT to maintain. It's difficult for staff to interact. We have been spending a lot of time working with IT, trying to find ways to make that more efficient. In the last year, we have completed a federated model with IT, and we have some very positive first looks at how that's going to work out for us. We're very excited. And the reason I mention IT and why that's a, why that's a big deal for us is the second bullet here is long-term planning. One of the issues that we continually struggle from, whether it be facilities, fleet, or any number of the street, roadway, stormwater elements that we have, is understanding what the long-term maintenance costs and the long-term replacement costs are, trying to annualize that and give us a long-term plan. And that's something that we're really struggling, not struggling, that we're really striving to accomplish. And that's something that I would hope that council will be looking for in the next couple of years. I know the budget's excited because we'll be able to give them a level funding kind of platform for where we are going. Also, a couple of items that I wanted to mention. The first item here is a flood protection, flood protection extension agent. I'm not sure if that's necessarily the best term, but I do come from the Midwest, and I'm used to the term of extension agent as it relates to agricultural services. And typically, an extension agent would work for a federal, state, or educational association that would come out to the farms and help the farmers work with the tools that they have, help them to work on their crops, help them to work on what types of, what types of fertilizers work well, what types of pesticides work well. In our case, we're not, I'm not proposing that from the agriculture community, but from a flood protection standpoint, what we've seen over the last year since the flood protection program has been put in place is that there are a number of areas where we don't have, in the first round of the flood protection program, we don't have projects that are underway, and they're not scheduled. Yet we still have some very real issues as it relates to flooding. After our staff, our maintenance staff have been out, done all that they can do, cleaned out the coverts, cleaned out the ditches, there are still some places that we're seeing flooding. And we've, we've tried to meet with the communities and help them to understand what they're doing, but we've identified that there's a gap. There's a gap between what we can do with maintenance while we're waiting for the next round of flood protection and then what OEM does with FEMA. What we'd like to do, what we have proposed to do, is to create a position that would be able to work with residents, help them, help us develop a toolbox, rather, and help the residents be able to utilize those tools for their individual properties. Maybe it's a last line of defense, or maybe it's just some things that they could do around their house, you know, work with their drain spouts and that kind of thing. I mention this because this is one of the items that was identified by Kevin in his, in his presentation earlier as one of the elements that would, that was recommended by Kevin, at least that may, may need to be eliminated with a 1% reduction. One of the other items that we were pretty excited about also is streetlight maintenance. I hear repeatedly from citizens that they're frustrated with the amount of streetlights that are out. Part of that is on Dominion, but part of it's on us as well. About 10 years ago, we started adding LEDs to our, to our street network, and as a result, those were streetlights that the city owns. So we have a measure of streetlights that the city owns and is responsible for maintaining, and then we have a measure that are owned by Dominion. This, this crew will help us to take care of the streetlights that we have that are now getting kind of that critical element where they, they need a lot of love, they need a lot of attention to be able to continue on with their lifespan, and also be able to help us really track and try and be a little bit more aggressive with the Dominion ones and be able to have a more robust streetlight maintenance program. Challenges as it relates to waste management. In this budget, there is an increase recommended of $2.50 per month per residence. We always take any kind of an increase very seriously. This is not something that we would like to do, but we recognize that it's a necessity. The Waste Management Enterprise Fund has not really functioned as an enterprise fund in the traditional sense. It has received assistance from the general fund. It has received assistance from TIP over the years to buy refuse trucks, and it has not really been able to sustain itself as it should. We are recommending that $2.50 would be appropriate for this year. However, and I have to, have to caveat this, as I have presented to City Council before, there is a recycling question that's out there that we have, we have a contract that will be expiring at June of '24. That is going to be a game changer for where we are. We will really need to look at what that is, how it's going to impact us fiscally, what our desire as a city is, and, and how we want to move forward from there. If, if we were to stay the current rate of recycling, the current model of recycling with curbside recycling at everybody's house, I can guarantee that that $2.50 would not, would not cover that. In fact, it will likely be close to another $2 in order to be able to cover that. I mentioned that only from the standpoint of saying, I just don't want you all to think that this is, this is a one-time shot in the arm and it's going to fix us. We believe that $2.50 puts us on the right track to stabilizing us for where we sit today, but there's another big question coming up in the upcoming year, and I expect that you'll hear a lot more about that. There are a few challenges that face the Department of Public Works, and special events are one of them. We are so excited to have something in the water back. We are so excited for Beach It. But, but the Department of Public Works does a lot of work as it relates to these activities, and we do not have special, special event staff. And so as a result, that means we pull staff off of other duties. Oftentimes, that's traffic operations, and, and that causes a little bit of a jam for us to make sure that we're able to get everything that we should done. So when, when we're pulling staff to be able to do these events, it does sometimes cut us short in other areas, and we'll be looking at that in the upcoming, in the upcoming year, and there may be an ask next year. Nothing asked this year, just wanted to let you know that it's out there. And then, and then finally, we do have a couple of other challenges that are ahead. I won't, I won't kick this dead horse, but of course, inflation, supply chain disruptions, while it seems to be easing somewhat, still exists. Monica from HR did a wonderful presentation on recruitment and retention, and I think we have started to see some turn there, but we still have some critical positions that we're still struggling with. And, and some of those positions are integral to achieving some of the priority goals that City Council has given us, and so we still struggle with some of those. And then lastly, I did want to mention that the stormwater ERU rate freeze is causing us a little bit of difficulty. It was originally expected to be increased 3.5 cents annually, and of course, that was frozen because of the pandemic. It was frozen yet again, and then as a result of passing the referendum, it has been frozen until fiscal year '29. We believe we have adequate revenue to do what we claim that we would, what we said we would do for this upcoming year. However, it is worth noting that with the increases in, in everything that we're seeing from the consulting side of the house, labor, equipment, we're a little bit concerned that the ERU will be able to allow us to continue to provide the same level of service as we move into the future. Again, no recommendation is made this year, just wanted to make sure that City Council was aware of that.
As I said, we're not recommending an increase in this budget, but what we're saying is that when council made that decision, we were operating in a world where we did not see 30, 40, 45% increases in materials, equipment, and labor as well. So we're just letting you know that we're starting to see, we're getting to a point where our future expenditures are going to quickly outpace our revenue, but not asking for a decision now, just bringing it to council's attention.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any questions? Okay, Josh, and then Barbara.
LJ, thank you very much for the presentation. Just a couple of quick questions. I was reading through the operating budget and noticed where your, there were several instances where you had additional FTEs, but there was zero accompanying budget impact. Is that because of the rate increases, or there are, I guess, funds in place to pay for those FTEs?
Yes, sir. If you remember, in the beginning part of this, I mentioned that 47.7% of our general fund is made up from VDOT revenues. VDOT increased the amount of funding that we have, and as a result, because VDOT's increased to us, can really only be used for a limited scope of things, those employees would be covered by that increase. And so it doesn't, it doesn't require, while it's technically out of the general fund, it does not require an increase from property tax-generated general fund, if that makes sense.
Way to find money.
Thank you.
Okay, Barbara, then Rosemary.
Two or three, but I'll make them quick. On your department operating budget chart here, the Sandbridge SSD fund shows a very large increase. I'm sure it's just in the way you're reporting this, or at least I think it must be, but I don't understand a 57% change. Is that just because it's accumulative?
It's vehicle replacement? That's what I'm being told. It's a one-time for vehicle replacement, is what I'm being told.
Okay, we'll talk about that later. You can explain it to me.
After budget explains it to me, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, we'll, we'll ask somebody else in. This, this changes in initiatives for service, I think was a, well, you have it up there. No, that's, flood protection and your extension agent. I think that's a good comparison. But I think in the Dewberry study, one of the elements was for individual property owners to be able to do things. And, and it's good that you address that because we do have people say, well, what can I do? Is this something like the VPAC that we put in last year, which is, we have added some funding to the Virginia Dare State Program that allows people to be able to get some cost participation with things that they're doing? I think it's very successful, and if that's what you're adding on to, I think that's one of the tools in the toolbox.
Yes, ma'am. What we're proposing in, in this particular initiative was really just the hiring of the employee, the ability for that person to work with some consulting firms to develop what that toolkit would be that would be available for citizens. The way we envision it working, very much like an extension agent, would be for the community to reach out to us and say, hey, I have this problem. We go out, we do the maintenance work, we've done all that we can do. The resident is still frustrated because it doesn't, he or she doesn't feel that they've had the service that they need. There's the gap between what OEM does with FEMA, being able to assist them with the projects that they have. We felt that it would be appropriate for us to be able to walk somebody through the system and be able to make all the right ties, and so that, that it never came to a time when Public Works has said, well, we've done all we can do, you have to go talk to OEM now. We really wanted somebody, we wanted to create that personal service that allowed somebody to, to have somebody holding their hand through the system. I'm not saying everybody's going to reach happiness at the end, because we all know that there are limits to resources, but we did want to make sure that we had everything that we could do there. Some of those, you know, some of those tools in the toolkit would be like disconnecting your water spout or grating the slope away from your house. It might get to be more evolved, like putting corals in around your house or something like that, that would be a little bit more, more intense. So we really, we really feel like this is a value-added component, and it did come directly from Dewberry's report, yes, ma'am.
I think that's an important element that, you know, we are missing, is what people can do on their own property. As far as the streetlight maintenance, you're absolutely right. That's a lot of the calls that I get. And so is that also adding a person, or is it just increasing your program?
I believe it's two people, two people and a vehicle. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this would be FTEs. And, and then as far as the recycling, I know this is something we've been worrying about because we've been watching what's happened at Chesapeake, and we know our people are recyclers and worrying about what they're going to do. I know we've, that there's, there's a program, I'm sure, not sure where it is, whether it's in Public Works or if it's in Parks and Rec, but, you know, encouraging people to do these things. And, you know, there are a lot of nice little programs and so forth, but I'm afraid we're not getting the information out, and maybe this is where we need the communications people that are being proposed. But I really think over this next year, and we talked about it a lot when we were talking about the plastic bag thing, we really just have to help people who maybe aren't thinking about it, to think about it a little bit more, because I think that the desire is there, we've just got to get it going. But we, we need to understand, we've got a year to, to deal with this issue, and so if during this year, we could be very conscious about what we're doing, I think that's going to be important.
Yes, ma'am. We anticipate a large public participation process as it relates to recycling. I think it's important that we, that we help our citizens understand exactly what they get for recycling and exactly what the costs are, what the alternatives would be, and then hear from them what they want. I think that that's incredibly important. It's the only way that this body can make the decision that they, that they need to make.
Thank you.
Okay, Rosemary.
Thank you. And I wanted to ask a little about the recycling, too, because Chesapeake did away with it. Their citizens were extraordinarily upset, extraordinarily upset, and I might as well have a crystal ball, but in your crystal ball, you know, are you seeing some, some alternatives that we might be able to do that are affordable?
Yes, ma'am. There are alternatives, but, but with anything, there's, there's a trade-off, right? I mean, if, and I don't, I really don't want to take this opportunity to get into recycling because I think it's a really long, complicated discussion, and I, and I would want to be fair to you, to you and to whomever's watching. I think that we really need to have that conversation and kind of talk about what those alternatives are and what, what that means, both fiscally and then from a convenience standpoint.
And I want to thank you. You all, you're so responsive, and you do such a great job.
Thank you.
Really, and you've got such a wide variety of things that are under your purview, but just thank you so much.
Patrick.
Mr. Mayor. The council, understanding that recycling is going to be something that we have to deal with probably a year from now, well, we have to make a decision well before a year from now, you think it'd be appropriate for us to work to
before a year from now, you think it'd be appropriate for us to work towards bringing something to you all, like in June timeframe?
Yeah, without question, you've got to be ready for it. Yeah.
Create that and cultivate it a lot.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, we're moving towards some of your CIP sections, and we're going to get the coastal team to come and give you an update on the proposed coastal CIP for fiscal year '24. And joining us is Dan Adams, the coastal manager.
Thank you, Mr. Dehaney, for the introduction, and good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My pleasure to present the Coastal FY '24-29 Capital Improvement Program. First slide is an overview of the program. We have 27 projects and programs in the coastal section. The bulk of the funding, about two-thirds, is dedicated to shore protection and beach access, beach replenishment, and then the other third is for our navigation dredging programs. First table is a listing of our beach replenishment and access projects without changes to funding from last year's budget. Project number one, Bay Beach Restoration, that provides funding for Cape Henry and Ocean Park beaches when we place sand that does not come from the Lynn Haven Federal Dredging Project. Then we have a standalone project for Chesapeake Beach, Croatan Beach, Sand Bridge Beach Access Improvements. And Projects Five and Six provide funding for the next two renourishment cycles planned for Sand Bridge in 2026 and 2030. And I do have some very good news I wanted to share today. We got word last month from Norfolk District of the Army Corps of Engineers that through the investment, infrastructure investment and job acts, work plan allocation, $22.4 million has been allocated for the next phase of Sand Bridge renourishment, which is a big deal. We have not seen the full level of cost participation from federal government since 2002. It's a 35% local, 65% federal cost share arrangement. And in 2007, there was a 20% cost share from the federal government, 0% in 2013, and less than 5% in 2020. So we're very excited about that. The next chart is our projects without any funding changes in our navigation dredging program. This includes dredging of Rudy Inlet, Lynn Haven Inlet, main branches of the eastern branch. We have an upcoming project for Pleasure House Point, and some other programs that support main channel dredging. And then, this chart is for our Neighborhood Navigation Dredging Program. The Neighborhood Dredging Special Service District Program provides dredging services for three cycles of dredging for a neighborhood over a period of 16 years. We've adopted seven neighborhood projects to date. We've completed first cycle dredging for five of those seven, and we are now, we have out to bid the long-awaited Hurst Cove and Gill's Cove project. So we're excited that they are finally, after many years of delays for environmental and real estate reasons, that project is out to bid and are ready to bring that to completion. Some potential future SSD additions and changes that you'll be hearing about later this year is a request for a petition of the Browns Cove neighborhood. That would be our eighth project if that's adopted. We have some renewed interest in the Thalia Buchanan Creek neighborhood for a repetitioning of that waterway. And we have a request from the Chesapeake and Colony neighborhood to extend their program duration from 16 to 20 years due to some delays in starting that first cycle of dredging. Now, this is a listing of, I'm sorry, projects with changes. So I'll go over those in more detail individually. First is our beach profile monitoring program that has been within our capital budget. We've decided to move that this year into the operating budget. There's no additional cost increase associated with that. It's a continuation of the historic level of funding. Second is a restoration of $2,550,000 in funding that was deferred in last year's budget until 2026. The federal government has accelerated and identified funding for the next cycle of resort beach nourishment, so they're going to be asking for the local cash match sooner than anticipated. So this is not an additional fund request, it's just an acceleration of the restoration of funding that was previously deferred. Now, the Army Corps has, they've recently updated their cost estimate for this project. The total cost estimate is $20 million with a city share of seven, and that's a higher amount than what was provided in the budget document at that time that was prepared. The previous estimate was 14 and a half and $5 million, but we're still able to cover the city's $7 million share with the scheduled and requested appropriations. Okay, various minor dredging projects. We are asking for a substantial increase of about 25% from $400,000 annually to $500,000 annually. This CIP supports annual dredging of the Crab Creek Channel that serves the Lynn Haven Boot Ramp. It also includes dredging about every other year of Long Creek, and we're having to expand our permitting and dredging of the eastern section of Long Creek in the future. That area does not shoal as quickly as the rest of the channel, but there is some emerging shoaling that needs to be addressed. Showing Point Neighborhood Dredging, this is simply two, this is simply a new CIP that replaced the CIP that was, that was in place for the first cycle of dredging. We completed Cycle One dredging last July. One major ask this year is to accelerate funding for dredging of the western branch of Lynn Haven River. Recent condition surveys indicated areas of significant shoaling in the western branch of the Lynn Haven River. So this was programmed in FY '25 and '26, so we have some shoaling in some critical areas that we need to remove so we can continue to access the dredge transfer station and move forward with the old donation neighborhood dredging project. But there was a less total volume, so we were able to reduce the overall project budget, but ask for funding sooner. So we're asking for less sooner to get busy with that. Western branch of the Lynn Haven River was last dredged in 2016. Some coastal accomplishments, one we're proud of is the restoration of Ocean Park Beach. Last summer, we placed 400,000 cubic yards of sand from the Norfolk Harbor Deepening Project. Last month, we've installed sand fencing and beach grasses, and the beach is looking fantastic. The 400,000 cubic yard volume is, it's more than twice the volume of material that we've ever placed on Ocean Park Beach at one time, so that's going to make a significant impact on storm damage mitigation and a wider beach. A lot of projects coming up for construction this year, too many to list, but we are going to be very busy in the coastal section, managing a whole host of projects, 14 in total that will be going to construction in this fiscal year. Coastal challenges remain the same as last year. Shore protection funding greatly reduces storm damages and cost impacts. It's much more effective to protect the beaches up front instead of trying to recover after the fact. We've learned a lot from other locality. Superstorm Sandy was a game changer. The communities that had beach replenishment projects fared much better than those that did not, and we've proven that here in Virginia Beach. We're hoping the scenes of storm damage that you see on the left-hand side of the page are images of the past. And we also are striving to maintain our relationships with the Army Corps of Engineers and the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, who we lease our sand sources from for the Sand Bridge project. So with that, we will take questions and comments.
Michael and Barbara.
Thank you. Just for the sake of viewing public and many people who I've heard from over the course of the last two years, could you just give us a little bit more information, further up to speed on the Hurst Cove dredging project, and maybe provide some idea about a timeline? It looks like it's set for construction, fully funded. What's that going to look like for the public and for the people who have been paying into that dredging program for all these years?
Yeah, Hurst and Gill's Cove were adopted, and what's, what's stymied us and prevented us from moving forward was the having a dredge transfer station, a location to move the material from barge to truck. We now have that, we're improving that site. The project has been, has been combined with dredging of the eastern branch of the Lynn Haven River, so we have three separate projects, dredging of the main branch of the eastern branch of the Lynn Haven, Gill's and Hurst Cove. We're putting those together as one bid package to maximize economy of scale and share some cost savings with the SSDs, and they've been waiting very patiently. We opened bids May 4th. We anticipate about four to six weeks to get to a contract award, and we'll issue an NTP, and we're going to get busy dredging this year. That'll be about an 18-month, 20-month contract duration.
Thank you. I know that many people will be very happy to hear that and very excited to get that project underway and complete. Thank you for your efforts.
Thank you for asking.
Barbara.
Just on that topic, before I get to mine, have these projects, these dredging projects, which are all SSDs, do they get funded properly, or do we need to know that something needs to be adjusted so that we're not over-collecting or under-collecting?
We're not making any funding adjustments this year. After we complete the first cycle of dredging, we do a cost accounting, and we would use that information to make any budget requests for funding changes in the coming years. But for this year, no.
That's good to hear. Well, the other SSD, of course, I'm worried about is the Sand Bridge, and I'm glad to hear about that money. We'll talk about that some more, because it sounds interesting. But in your major challenges, where you have identification of new sand resources, that one really concerns me for all of our sand replenishment projects, and I worry about the Sand Bridge source remaining. I know the others are more over on the harbor, but how are we doing with this issue?
Good question. You raised that at the briefing a few weeks ago about Croatan, and I put together a document that may be coming to you in a Friday package this week. But there was a recent study completed by Bureau of Ocean Energy Management with the city and other stakeholders, DAMNEC, and they've identified that there's 58 years' worth of sand in that shoal for Sand Bridge, and they're also looking at other areas beyond that. And that'll be detailed further in that, in that report.
I'll look forward to getting that, because that's really critical for all of our offshore. One of the speakers at the symposium a week ago was Dr. Heim, who talked about sand, and he's extremely good, if you didn't get it, it's recorded, but talking about not just creating a pile of sand, but creating the dunes in such a fashion that they really provide more effective protection, was a concept that I've really not heard. So I want to make sure that we are doing, I think particularly south of us in Duck and so forth, they're looking at the types of, whereas they didn't do the sand, I mean, the bridge replenishment that we've been doing, and now they wish they had, but we do want to keep up with whatever it is that I didn't realize we needed to be concerned about, but I'm sure you know. We'll talk about that.
I'll view that, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Hey, thanks, you've got a tremendous job, a lot of challenges, but thank you for what you do.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of council, Mr. Manager. I'm happy to be here to talk about the FY '23 Capital Improvement Program for the Flood Protection Program. These are all of the different pots of money that are included in the Flood Protection Program, and it's no surprise that the largest pot of money is from the bond referendum, which comprises 74% of the Flood Protection Program, and that's followed by appropriations to date. The total Flood Protection Program, programmed funding is just over seven, is almost $762 million. There are 40 projects and programs in the Flood Protection Program. 30 of those are now grouped into seven master projects. Starting with the first master project, the Central Resort District Master Project, there are three projects in this master project. All three of these projects will be bundled together into one construction contract and will be delivered by design-build. The appropriations to date are $99.4 million, and the estimated balance to complete is $13.6 million. We're just now beginning the preliminary engineering report on this project, and by this time next year, we will have a lot more information on this master project. Eastern Shore Drive Phase One Master Project, there are eight CIP projects in this master project. There is a sub-project under the Cape Henry Canal Phase Two Project, which is under construction right now. We are relocating a gravity sanitary sewer main, which is underneath the canal, and that project will be completed, complete later this year. Projects one through four are being combined into one construction contract. Projects five and six are being combined into one construction contract, and then seven and eight will be individual construction contracts. The appropriations to date for this master project are $34 million with an estimated balance to complete of $41.9 million. We did receive a BRIC grant for the projects one through four. We have not yet received the agreement from FEMA for that grant, so when we receive that funding, it will be appropriated. The Lake Bradford-Chub Lake Master Project has three CIP projects underneath. There are two sub-projects underneath the first one, the Lake Bradford-Chub Lake Project. Those projects are under construction, and they are the Lake Pleasure House Outfall and the Lake Bradford Dredging Project. They will both be completed this year. The Chub Lake-Lake Bradford Pump Station and Outfall Project will be a design-build project. That project will be advertised by the end of the year for a request for qualifications. We submitted another BRIC grant application to VDEM in the amount of $35 million. We hope to hear this summer whether FEMA has selected that for further review. This program has $120.1 million appropriated to date with a balance to complete of $32.1 And I keep saying estimated, I need to keep saying estimated balance to complete, because these are just based on estimates as we receive design submissions. We are hopeful in the next year that some of these estimates will come down. The Linkhorn Bay Drainage Basin Master Project, there are two CIP projects in this master project. Both of these are in design. We have just over $9.7 million appropriated to date and a balance to complete of $433,000. The Stormwater Green Infrastructure Master Project has two sub-projects. The first, Marsh Restoration in Back Bay, it has a little over $31.4 million appropriated to date with a balance to complete of $14.4 million. We did receive a National Coastal Resilience Fund grant through the National Fish and Wildlife Federation in the amount of $9.9 million, which has yet to be appropriated. And the Elizabeth River Wetland and Flood Plain Restoration Project has a little over $8.4 million appropriated to date, and it is funded, and both of these projects are under design. The Southern Rivers Master Project, there are three CIP projects in this master project. There is $88.5 million appropriated to date for all three. There is a balance to complete, an estimated balance to complete of $7.5 million. Sand Bridge-New Bridge Intersection Improvement Project is under design. The Punggol Ferry Road Project is just beginning the preliminary engineering report, and the West Net Creek Bridge will begin preliminary engineering report this summer. And we are also delivering the West Net Creek Bridge Project by the design-build method. And the last master project, and the largest one, Windsor Woods Princess San Plaza and the Lakes, there are 10 CIP projects under this master project. Starting with number one, we just opened bids on the first section of Bow Creek Stormwater Park, and we're happy to say that all of the bids came in under the engineer's estimate. Jumping to number six, the Windsor Woods Drainage CIP, this project has three sub-projects underneath it. The first was Clubhouse Road, which is completed. The next, South Plaza Trail and Presidential Boulevard Drainage Improvements Project, we expect to give the contractor notice to proceed in the next couple of weeks. The Old Forge and Red Lion Drainage Improvements Projects, we just opened bids on that project, and again, we received bids less than our engineer's estimate. And then moving on to number nine, the Windsor Woods Tide Gate is currently under construction. If you're going down 264, you're starting to see a lot more activity there. There's a large crane on site now. And the remaining seven projects in this list And the remaining seven projects in this list are being combined into one design-build project. We just shortlisted three firms and we are expecting to release the request for proposals later this week. There is $266.9 million appropriated to date on this master project and the balance to complete is $226.3. Again, estimated balance. We're hoping these numbers come down in the next year. Now I'm going to move into flood protection programs and projects that are not included in a master project. The top ones are the three, the top three are just projects. All three of those are under construction. We combined North Lake Holly Section 3B with South Lake Holly. That's under construction. And then in College Park Level Green, we are doing some pipe cleaning and dredging in that area. In the programs, we continue to, our work on the Stormwater Master Plans for the 15 drainage basins and we are on track to have them complete by the end of this year. And for the Coastal Storm Risk Management Study, we're working closely with the Army Corps of Engineers on this. The next major milestone is going to be a tentatively selected plan sometime in the fall of next year. There are two programs within the Flood Protection Program that receive ongoing flooding. They are the Stormwater Infrastructure Cost Participation Program and the Stormwater Project Administration. Starting with the first one, Stormwater Infrastructure Cost Participation Program, this program receives $2 million a year. The program is to cost-participate with private development on necessary stormwater infrastructure. And the next project that receives ongoing funding, the Stormwater Project Administration receives $1 million per year. This program is assisting us with the Flood Protection Program by providing oversight, implementing project controls and preparing internal and external reports. Some projects that were completed in the last year, the first, the Clubhouse Road Storm Drainage Project, total project cost was four and a half million. We completed that project in September. And then the Asheville Park Pump Station substantially completed in February with a total project cost of $2.9 million. You are starting to see our blue signs across the city. We have five projects under construction right now. They're shown here. The first three will be completed this year. North Lake Holly and South Lake Holly combined will be complete in the middle of next year and then the Windsor Woods Tide Gate by early 2025. And that picture, we just got a new aerial photo from the drone just the other day and I wasn't able to upload it into the presentation here, but stay tuned on that. And major challenges, our friend, the bat. I'm not going to keep repeating, everybody's going to be talking about construction cost increases and equipment material lead time. Some challenges we've experienced on the Bow Creek Stormwater Park, we were advertising the project and we learned that we needed to take down some trees in order to keep the project moving forward because there is a time of year restriction between April 1st and November 14th for the long-eared bat. So we worked with Parks and Rec to fell some trees for that project. And with that, I'll take questions.
Any questions? Barbara?
On these notice to our balance to completes, I assume that's where you're applying some of these grants and so forth and those monies?
Yes, ma'am.
That's money in addition to what would have been, what's allocated from the referendum. So that's, that balance to complete is money we've got to come up with to do these projects. Is that right?
Yes, Councilman Bradley. And I think we mentioned it before as well. We said, don't panic. The grants aren't necessarily new money. They're helping us keep alive with inflation. What we're seeing in about two to three years from now, and I can't wait if all things hold true, that we should get to some kind of normalized pricing standpoint and then maybe, maybe we go back into the world where the grants are more helpful than not. But yes, that is showing the, what we estimate is a balance to complete the projects that we'll need to find additional funds for and the grants will help to some extent, but it may need other resources as well.
Otherwise, it has to come from local dollars unless the state wants to help us now and then or something.
Absolutely, Councilman Bradley.
Mostly then.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Hey, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Mr. Mayor, at this time, we're going to get Jim Milliken from the Stormwater, he's our Stormwater Regulatory Engineer. He's going to give an update on the Stormwater Regulations Program.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Manager. Thank you for having me here today. I'm going to start us off with the remainder of our Stormwater CIP is split about 70/30 between our Operations and Maintenance Section and the Regulatory and Water Quality Section. I'll start us with the Regulatory and Water Quality Section and then my colleague, Mr. Cotter, will close us out with Operations and Maintenance. None of our current standalone CIP projects have a change in funding need this year. However, I did want to draw your attention briefly to the Kempst Lake Water Quality Improvement Project and the Chatham Hall Lake Water Quality Improvement Projects. Both of them were awarded SLAF Grant Awards from the State of Virginia this year and it was a very extraordinary year in the SLAF Grant world this year. Usually, typically, the state offers 50% cost reimbursements for projects of their construction costs. And this year was pretty extraordinary. We were able to secure grant awards for 75% of our construction costs for each of those two projects totaling up to $9 million, which will be awarded to us or reimbursed to us as construction is completed. And that money can then be used to help out with some of our operations and maintenance needs throughout the city.
I see a spot for cost savings.
It feels small compared with flooding, but it was a big one for us. Most of our program CIPs are geared towards compliance with the city's MS4 permit or municipal separate storm sewer system, four S's. Our permit is enforced by Virginia DEQ and we can be audited by DEQ and EPA every five years. Areas of non-compliance can receive fines of up to $32,500 per day per occurrence, so we like to keep on top of this. One aspect of our permit is for achieving TMDL reduction goals. TMDL is, stands for Total Maximum Daily Load. It's sort of like a pollution diet or budget for our lake streams and rivers. And so one way that we reduce these pollutants going to our, those waterways is by implementing water quality improvement projects. Smaller projects that are less than $1 million are typically funded through watershed-based CIPs such as Lynn Haven River or Southern Rivers Watershed Program CIP. None of these program CIPs have a change in funding need for this year. We do have one new standalone CIP project requested within the current funding levels is the Providence Park Wet Pond Project. This project includes construction of a wet pond within Providence Park using attractive landscaping to make the pond an amenity adjacent to a frequently used walking path on the park. It includes public education elements and amenities for residents visiting the park. The pond reduces pollutants for the Chesapeake Bay TMDL and will have some flood reduction benefits at the VDOT Traffic Operations Center and surrounding area. Stakeholder coordination has already been completed with VDOT and the park, City Park Department on this project and is very encouraging to move forward with. I have mentioned our SLAF Grant awards, but this will be a productive year this year. Lots of projects moving forward to construction. And I would also be remiss if I didn't bring up our Lynn Haven River Basin Ecosystem Restoration Project. Always a mouthful. This is a partnership with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to restore some habitat that has been lost over the decades and some vital habitats within our Lynn Haven River Basin has had wetland restoration partnerships with the city public schools in the past. And this year, they completed the monitoring for sub-aquatic vegetation for their first phase and the monitoring results of that phase will help inform future efforts to restore the Lynn Haven River going forward. And I'll turn this over to Mr. Cotter.
Any questions at all? Good stuff. Appreciate it. Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members. Happy to be here this afternoon to present on the Public Works Operations Stormwater CIP Budget. We have a number of projects that do not have any changes requested and just to run through those, this is the only project we have without it. It's the 42nd Street Stormwater Pump Station Outfall Repairs. We will be bidding this project here in the near term. The bid documents are ready to go, so we'll be moving forward. And that has to do with the outfall repairs and the flapper gates on the end of the stormwater pump stations that are located down at the oceanfront. All the pump stations, the 16th, 42nd, 61st and 79th Pump Stations all deliver stormwater out about 2,000 feet out into the ocean. And on the 42nd and the 16th Streets Stormwater Pump Stations, we have flapper gate backflow prevention valve problems, so we have to replace those. Other programs that we have in Public Works Operations that we've talked with you about numerous times over the years that do not have any current changes to, you can see the list here. It's quite extensive. If anybody has any questions on those, I will address those when they come up. Otherwise, I really don't see, won't be going through each one of those individually. As far as operations and management programs with modifications, what Jim had mentioned to you was the SLAF Grants where they receive funding to get reimbursement for the projects that they have. That additional funding, Public Works Operations was the benefactor of that. So a lot of these projects are receiving funding that was, was put forward from the SLAF Grant. First one, go through these individually, is the Lakeview Drive Channel Improvement Project. This is an outfall that is located west of Independence, north of Haygood. It receives excessive stormwater flow and over the years, it's become very erosive in that area. We had the project pretty much ready to go before COVID and before the other unfortunate events in 2019 and we have dusted it back off. We're getting everything in place. We'll have to do some easements and some acquisition on that and then we will move that one out for bid. Next one is Canal Management. We've been discussing this with you over the last several years. We've gotten some funding for it, but it hadn't been a steady, a steady stream of funding. We are getting, with the additional money from the SLAF, we're proposing $500,000 a year to help us with the canal management and maintenance program. The next one that's receiving some of that funding is the cave-in repair program. This is one of the most frequent asked questions that I get throughout the city is how long or why is it taking so long to repair the cavens on the storm drainage system? We have through three in-house crews that perform the maintenance and then we also utilize a CIP, this particular CIP, to fund that with contractor support. There's certain repairs that require the contractor to be utilized, whether it's a submerged system where we need jivers in the water, plugs that need to be put in or it's a very technical repair that may be excessively deep where we need that contractor support. So we've been utilizing this funding to help us catch up and try to reduce that backlog. We are still a little over six months, but we are making good progress on reducing that backlog. We'd like to get it down closer to two months, which is a little easier to explain to somebody that it's going to take me two months to do that repair versus six months or a year. Then the next project receiving funding would be, or request for funding is Lake Management, Maintenance and Dredging. We are still on a cycle that's, or a repeat cycle that's larger than what we'd like. We've been requesting funding over the years. We're requesting, I think it's a half million dollars a year additional on this one and there's some additional funding that we've also received via the ARPA grants that is helping us advance dredging on a number of lakes throughout the city and that is progressing. We will, we are doing the design work with our annual services contractors and then we'll be bundling those lakes into packages and bidding them out. Next project is roadside ditch program. A couple of years ago, we did receive some initial startup fund for roadside ditch support work. We only have one in-house crew to do roadside ditches, estimate over 500 miles of roadside ditches in the city and one crew just cannot keep up with the requests that keep coming in. So we requested additional funding. This was a one-time approach or one-time additional funding put into that where they increased the appropriations to date to 5.8 million. I'll talk about a couple of recent accomplishments. We did, after the, after the new fiscal year, so in FY23, we did do the completion on the Pine Wood Road culvert replacement. This was a major project for us in, as far as for an operational replacement. We did end up coordinating that with Public Utilities and the others where they replaced water sewer lines in there and we replaced our culvert in there. We ran into some difficulties, but we were able to successfully complete that and get the road back open middle of last year. Other accomplishments, lake dredging, this is Rock Creek One was completed in May of 2023. We continue to do the dredging on the lakes, on the 400-plus lakes that we have in the city and that program is moving successfully. Finally, some of the stormwater management challenges for operations, the same as what a lot of the people that are doing construction are dealing with, increases in cost, whether it's manpower cost or materials, if you can even get the materials. We have certain materials that we're, we're not able to even procure, so that presents its own set of challenges. The struggle to compete with everybody else for funding is another challenge doing maintenance. We are really working to get to a preventative versus a reactive maintenance. Sometimes you have to be reactive or we are reactive, but we prefer to be preventative if at all possible. And in doing that, that would help us reduce our maintenance cycles and our backlog. We're, in addition to the ARPA funding that we received for the BMP dredging that I mentioned, we also received ARPA funding for neighborhood preservation, our neighborhood rehabilitation projects and we are moving out on those also. We've got a number of neighborhoods that we're doing that with our annual services contractors where we go in, we investigate, we clean and we use a closed-circuit television to inspect the pipes and then we develop repair plans and we go out and do those repairs and that program is moving along nicely also. And then we do want to, with the additional funding, expand our canal and roadside ditch maintenance. Flooding is a major issue in the city. We've got the bond referendum that the citizens voted on and council has moved us forward out and you've heard the presentations on that. But what we want to do is be able to get the water to those pump stations, get the water to those receiving water bodies and that's part of what we're, we're looking at with that. And then increase for stormwater pump station maintenance is the last item. We are doing, we were funded a number of years ago for doing pump station maintenance, stormwater pump station maintenance, which we've got a good handle on as far as our mechanical systems and so forth, but we've noticed now lately that just the kind of the, the overall facility condition of the pump stations as far as the building structure and some of the other items is going to be in need of some additional maintenance also as we move forward. So we just added that on. With that, that concludes my presentation. If you have any discussions, Jim or I would be available.
Any questions at all?
Yes, ma'am.
Barbara and then Amelia. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Just a quick question. I recently got an email from, you know, one of my concierge, and she like asked me again to do with that roadside ditch and rehab. Who do I call?
The main number to call if you have any maintenance issues as far as stormwater or roadside ditches, off-road ditches, is our customer service number, which is 757-385-1470.
Thank you.
Our office will coordinate and get them to the right person as well.
Right, good. Thank you.
Yeah, Barbara and then Josh.
Well, maintenance is so important, and that's what we hear from people, and we added some crews the past few years, and we're doing a lot of work. Unfortunately, we, no, this is the fortunate thing. We haven't had one of those storms in a number of years. My goodness. But that's what's going to test these things, and I think people seem to think that we're still back where we were at Matthew, but we've really done a lot, and so much has been done, and we don't want to have to test it. But I know that, that a lot has been done, and that's what people ask about, and I really appreciate Phil being at the Ag Advisory Commission meeting last week, because I think letting people know what's being done and what has been done is just an extremely important part of this, and then getting the feedback from people about what they think still needs doing. But I know you're making good progress in these backlogs, and I know that's something we've been trying to work on for a number of years. And just continuing to update us so we can pass the information on to our people, I think it's going to be really helpful if we, you know, can continue to do that, because, you know, I hear people say so much, oh, you aren't doing the maintenance and so forth, and I know you're doing a lot. I know there's still more to be done, but just so we can give the word to the people is really, really critical. And we promised that in the bond referendum too, and I'm glad to hear all of these things that we're really obvious, you know, we're really making certain that we're working on that, and I just want people to know it.
Josh?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much for your report. And to Councilwoman Henley's point, it would be nice, and not now, but at some point, to have kind of a visual kind of presentation of where we've been doing the, these dredging and ditch clearing operations so that we can maybe show people a little bit more than just a line item on a, on a spreadsheet that, that projects are getting done in and around their neighborhoods. And my, my question for you is that 21-3 on the ARPA money, that was, that was one time, obviously, and that's got to be spent, what, before '26?
It has to, yes, sir. It has to be obligated by December 31st of 2024 and expended by December 31, 2026.
Okay, was that for an expansion, I guess, of the scope of the, the number of, of canals that were dredged, or was that just to increase frequency with ones that were already kind of on the list, or?
Increase, yes. We just, we just advanced the work effort on the ones that we had in the queue to do the maintenance on.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hey, thanks a bunch. Great work by all. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, David Jarman, Transportation Division Manager, will come and give council an update on the proposed CIP for the transportation section.
Thank you, David. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, City Manager Dehaney. Again, David Jarman, Transportation Division Manager. I'm going to be bringing the FY '24-29 roadway CIP to you for your consideration. We'd like to start off our presentation with kind of an overview, just to show you how the city funding's broken down in our program. You can see the biggest portion of that goes to congestion and capacity improvements, well over 50% goes there, $112 million. You can see the other topics, I'm not going to read those, but the total amount there, the city funding in years one through six equates to $203 million, and that encompasses 64 projects and programs together. So if we take that money and we add that with our city and federal funding, you'll see the graph there. And just, just to note, I mean, this is one of the, the good things about our program is our, our grant funding, our grant group that goes after these awards, led by Katie Shannon and Stanley Smith, who's at the computer, do a great job of bringing in the money. And you can see there, that totals to $157 million. So we want to point out that we're using the money you give us to, to secure additional funding. So that percentage breakdown's about 43 state and federal and 57 city, percent city funding. So our total funding years one through six equates to $360 million for, for roadway transportation. If we had all the money in the world, our, our program costs are $1.6 billion, which have gone up significantly from last year. I'm sure most of the sections have identified that as well. So jumping ahead, I'm not going to go through every one of these projects. You can thank me later for that, but we've got two, two slides that show our projects here, just a listing of projects with no change. One of the things I want to point out that's kind of important with this one, and the next slide, is that 27 of these 34 projects, you'll note, have some form of outside funding, state and federal, all federal, some source of non-program funding. So whether we like it or not, it's a good thing that we're bringing in additional money. The, the flip side to that is there's other strings that come with that that we have to pay attention to when we're programming and doing other things within our program for funding and just schedule things like that. So the last slide here shows our programs that don't have any changes, and you'll note there's a lot of programs in there that our operations group manages, from lighting to bridge rehabilitation, street reconstruction, those are all handled through operations through Mr. Cutter. And then within engineering, we handle the, the bus facility, the CEI, and important to us down there is number nine, the traffic safety improvement program. That's where we have a lot of our matching funds, city funds for the smaller grant-funded projects, so that's a very important program for us. Our next slide is actually a slide that we've never had to present to City Council before, and with all the changes we've had and the fiscal impacts, the budget impacts, we actually have to present a slide this year that talks about projects being deferred or delayed. So we're not, we're not happy about that. Certainly, it's something we wish we could avoid, but you can see the list of projects there that we've kind of identified. Our, our strategy there was to find projects that maybe weren't quite as far along or had kind of been more idle, hadn't been moving, projects that had state and federal requirements that had to be met. We've tried to keep those funded. So you'll note, of the eight projects listed here, six of those are fully city-funded. So sometimes those become targets when we have to talk about shifting money around just because they have fewer strings attached to them. So just want to kind of highlight that for you. All right, our next slide shows projects that do have modifications this year. Funding was requested, or new projects were put in the CIP, and we'll walk through these in a little bit more detail for you. Our first project is Centerville Turnpike Phase Three. This is to complete the four-lane section from Kimsville down the Chesapeake City Line. The project right now is currently at 60% design. We're working to get to 90% with incorporating some of the updated drainage standards. This is an important connection because it gives us that four-lane section all the way from Indian River down to Lynn Haven Parkway. So with Centerville Two and Three, we'll have that complete connection, so it's a really important project for us. Our forecasted start rate date right now is early 2027, and this is one that we had identified that had a balance to complete, that additional funding's being added to, to make us whole on that. The total project cost there is $61.6 million. Our next project is Rosemont Road Phase Five. This is, again, another four-lane segment here, the existing adding two lanes to the existing two lanes from Lynn Haven down to Dam Neck. It's a little less than a mile and a half. Obviously, congestion and signal improvements there with 10-foot-wide shared use path on both sides of the road. This project has been around for a while. I probably need to come clean on that. There's been some delays on this with regards to stormwater. We've had some resourcing issues in the past, so, but we're on the right track now. We've got a solid PM team on it, working on that and trying to get it done, and so we feel pretty strongly we'll be able to get this thing into construction late '25 or early '26 right now. That project also had a balance to complete of $13.3 million, but that's been added to the project to make us whole. So our total cost right now is $36.8 million. All right, next slide. This is a new project that's coming in with our recent SmartScale Round Five Awards. So these are new projects, new grants that were just awarded to us, kind of hot off the press there. This is Clearfield Avenue. This is a short segment from Cleveland Street to Virginia Beach Boulevard. If any of you have been up there, this is kind of a shortcut to get around the Witch Duck, Virginia Beach Boulevard intersection, it's kind of a quick way around that. But what we're going to do is basically put in a center turn lane, so you have a continuous turn lane, so it just allows through traffic to move and allows the turning traffic to kind of get out of the way there, so improves flow. We'll add some bike and ped improvements as well along that. The total cost there is $15 million. Next project is General Booth and Dam Neck Intersection. This is, again, another SmartScale Round Five Award. The next couple will fall in that same grouping of grant awards, but the goal here with this project is kind of improve traffic flow to and from Dam Neck base. So from General Booth, we're going to add an additional left turn lane southbound onto eastbound Dam Neck, and coming from the base, we're going to add an additional, take one of the through lanes and turn it into a right. So you'll have triple lefts coming in and dual rights going out, so that'll improve traffic flow and gives us more efficiency through there. Total cost for that is $5.3 million. Our next project is Independence Boulevard and Pleasure House Road. This is, again, another round, SmartScale Round Five. This, this project is going to take an innovative design using a green tea, what they call a green tea. It's basically a channelizing median improvement, and what the, the idea with that is we're going to allow the left turns to be channeled, but we're going to kind of prevent traffic flowing across the intersection. It just cuts down on conflict points and improves safety and efficiency of the intersection. There'll be a median break further upstream to the, to the, on the north side of the screen there, so you can come back and get to the businesses there on the opposite side of the road. So again, this is a total project cost of $6.4 million. All right, another project that we've got awarded here is for Indian River and Tompkins Lane. This project has actually kind of two intersections that are involved. At Tompkins Lane, we're going to remove an existing signal along Indian River Road and put kind of a modified R-cut, almost like a channelized left turn lane. And then at Kim's River Drive, we're going to modify that existing signal with some stamped crosswalks and pedestrian crossings. The idea here is that when we finish Indian River, Kimsville is great news. It improves significantly the efficiency of the intersection, and we've been able to see that there's other areas along that corridor that we can improve to further improve the efficiency, and that's what we're looking to do with this project. Total cost there is $2.7 million. Our next project is Providence Road. Again, this is another SmartScale Round Five Award. This is from Kimsville to Churchill Drive. Similar to the Cleveland Street project, we're going to be doing continuous left turn lanes to provide turning cars a way to get out of the, the through lanes and improve efficiency and safety, also providing some sidewalk amenities in there as well. The total project cost there is $12.7 million. Our next project is a new project that's proposed. This is Indian River Road Bridge, also known as Speed Fortress Bridge. When you look at this, you're going to see a really high cost. That's just an order of magnitude cost right now. The goal of this project is to do some preliminary design. This is kind of the next bridge that's on tap to be replaced. We've, we've hit some of the big projects with Lesnar and the Bridge on Alaskan Road. This is the next one that kind of comes up in the queue. It's got a fair to poor rating right now. Ops is going to do some work to hopefully bring that up, but we're kind of on the, the tail end of the service life of this bridge, so it's time to start thinking about replacement. Our goal is to just program the million dollars you'll see right there at the bottom to get the PER started and just do some preliminary analysis, see what we need to do, what we need a permit, et cetera. The next project is kind of the sister project to this is safety improvements along Indian River Road. Excluding the bridge, we'd be looking at potentially widening the road, some shoulder improvements, just some overall safety improvements that we would do in this area. If you're familiar with this area, if you get off the road, you're in the swamp, and you're going to be deep in the swamp is typically how it works. So again, we're just looking for some seed money, half a million dollars to do some analysis on that and see what we need to do for permitting. Total project cost there is just a shade under $20 million, and again, that's an order of magnitude estimate. Just a quick slide to show some project accomplishments and things underway. You'll see some lists there, some of the projects we got in construction or that have recently been completed. The bottom, big picture there is Sambridge Nemo 7A. If you haven't been down there, you're going to see a world of difference if, next time you go. First loan to Boulevard in the upper left or upper right, that's been almost under construction for almost a year. And then Potter's Road Diet was kind of over before it started. It was a quick project, quick hitter project, a small grant. We took a four-lane section and squeezed it down to a three-lane section with bike lanes, and I got that done very, very quickly, very efficiently. So just kind of recapping some challenges that have impacted roadway section. Obviously, we talked about this last year, was kind of market conditions. There's a lot of mega projects going on in the area, and so they're consuming a lot of bandwidth, and that's with personnel, with resources, materials, all the, the things that go with any construction project. So that continues to be a challenge for us. We're seeing that in, in the next item when we talk about pricing. We haven't maybe seen some of the crazy fluctuations that we saw 18 months ago. Some of the pricing has plateaued, but it hasn't gone down. We're all waiting for the drop. The drop hasn't happened, so we kind of are waiting with bated breath to see what happens there. And again, escalation continues to be an issue. We've started to address that with our bids by putting in, given us multipliers indexed, so that's working pretty well for steel, fuel, and asphalt so far. That, the way the contractor carries some risks, the city carries some risks, and it's kind of more of a fair opportunity for everybody. We'll see, we'll probably test that a little bit more here this summer as we hear talk about fuel prices going up. And then finally, just to note, our, our program in, this year's been extremely difficult. If you think about all the pieces and parts it takes to, to fund the roadway program and all the dynamics with the grant funding, it's very complicated. I mean, it, it's extremely complicated, so I don't want to let that go overlooked about the effort it took. I mean, the fact that we're bringing projects that we have to delay and defer, we don't do that. We just don't do that. So we're, we're definitely in some uncharted waters right now. We're trying to do the best we can with what we've got here. And then finally, just to note, VDOT performance metrics are becoming more at play. VDOT's talked about this. Obviously, there's always been performance metrics, but what's different now is VDOT's going to start using our performance on previous projects to, as a grading criteria for how we do on grant awards for new projects. So doesn't sound like too big of a deal. Generally, we've done pretty well. However, in the snapshot that VDOT's taken in there, kind of one size fits all, they're looking at data from FY '21, '20, and '21. Well, for us, coming out of 2019, you couldn't pick two years that were worse for us in our history. So we feel a little bit like the deck stacked against us on that, but as my wife has said, you know, thou protest too much, so we can only complain, you know, so much. And the answer to that is we just need to put our heads down and get projects done, and that's what we're doing. We've got a good group of staff, and they've been plowing ahead on projects, doing a great job of getting these things done, and we're continuing to do that and knock them out. So with that, that's the end, and I will answer any questions.
Okay, any questions? Barbara?
Thank you for looking at Indian River Road, and I know this is just the very beginning of dealing with what's occurred there in the swamp with Speed's Bridge. I didn't realize it was rated as it is, but this particular work is going to correct the problems to get it to a point until you can build, rebuild it. Is that the idea?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, operations is, they've got a project plan for that to do some, some updates to get us by. It's kind of an interim repair. Yes.
And that part of Indian River Road is just an extreme safety issue. That's one of the major east-west connectors, and to go east on that section of Indian River Road after dark and in the rain is taking your life in your hands. And I know this is just the beginning. Look at that as well. That's going to be major work whenever it's done, but we have to start someplace, and I appreciate that.
Sure.
And I'd really appreciate the work that you all are doing with Sambridge 7A, Nemo 7A. That seems to be really going along, and I would just comment that I appreciate too the fact that, that they, everybody is looking for savings, and we ran into a little bump when they determined that we could reuse some of that soil that's, or dirt, whatever you want to call it, because they thought it was just muck, coming out of that project. But if instead of taking it to the dump and throwing it away, if we could stockpile it someplace and dry it out and sift it, then it could be reused. And of course, the first place kind of didn't work out, but I think you all have got the second place all set up and going, and I haven't heard any, any complaints yet, so I guess you're okay there. But by doing this, they're looking to save something like $400,000.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and I think that's just fantastic, and I really appreciate being so aggressive as you all are, and I know you are. And just to make sure, this delay in this Elbow Road phase is not the part that was going to begin construction this year. That's still going to happen.
That's correct. That's 2D is the, is the one you're talking being delayed. 2B and 2C are on track for starting construction this fall.
I didn't want anybody who heard Elbow Road think that, that it wasn't going to happen, but that's the future phase. We'll catch that up, but it will start under construction later this year.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Amelia?
I want to thank you about something you have for District Four, Cleveland, Fairfield, British, area, so that's good news.
Okay, great.
Other subject I just wanted to ask, as you brushed briefly- Other subject I just wanted to ask, as you brushed briefly about bus stops. What kind of amenities or anything are you doing around bus stops?
We have the bus shelter program where we go in and take the, just a typical HRT bus stop. And we put in a concrete pad. And we do kind of the groundwork where we'll do the grading and sidewalk tie-ins and the ADA compliance. And then HRT will come back and put in the shelter and the bench and the other amenities. So we have those scattered throughout the city. We've completed, I'm going to say six phases of that already. We still have, I think, two or three phases to go. So, and within those phases, we have multiple locations. So there's, there's quite a few spots that we're hitting and it's really citywide. So that's been a good bang for the buck program. We've gotten a lot out of that.
What's happening for like Burton, not Burton Station, Baker? How far along in the basis are we for that area?
For bus shelters, you mean? So it's a matter, I'd have to look and check. We can, we can get that information for you specifically where we are.
Dr. Ross Hammond, that's a, you're thinking about a different program. The one that you and I were talking about is different than what?
It's different than what you're talking about?
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Anyone else, Josh?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And I would like to chime in alongside Councilman Ross Hammond and ask, I guess, just for, maybe just a written update on the bus shelter program and going forward as well. And I wanted to say thank you, Mr. Jarman. And I wanted to also acknowledge the city manager and his budget director for really succinctly explaining why these, why these road projects were deferred, delayed to all of us. And I had to, I had to take this back to our constituents in District Nine. There are three very significant road projects in District Nine that are among the, are on this list of deferred and delayed projects. And while it wasn't necessarily what people wanted to hear, I think it's certainly, the rationale is understandable. And one thing I wanted to make sure that the public knows is that just because these items aren't, are delayed, deferred, and I guess impacted in this year's CIP, that that does not mean that the design work isn't, isn't ongoing. And it didn't necessarily slow up the project as much as it did just reallocate next year's resources to complete some projects that were nearer to completion, so.
But that's actually an excellent point, and I failed to mention that, is that many of those projects that were already in design, we're trying, we funded to try to keep design moving. But as far as construction and outer activities, we've pushed those out. So you're absolutely correct. I don't think every single one, but I think a lot of them, we're trying to keep the design effort that was in progress in motion, so.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, I just want to say that with my involvement with the transfer TPO, the folks at VDOT are very highly complimentary of you and what's going on. And a good example of that is that new intersection at interchange at Witch Duck and 264. And they actually put a couple little amenities on the bridge and everything.
Yes, sir.
But they're very complimentary of it. And I understand they're moving forward with Independence and 264.
Yes, they are. They've, they're going to work on the IAR, the interchange access report. They've got the funding for that, CTP approved it. And so that's going to be an extended process, probably at least 24 months on that. But they've got the approvals they need, they've got the funding they need, and so they're able to move forward. So, yes, sir.
Kudos to you. And you know, like I said, thank you for the relationship you got with VDOT. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council. At this time, our Public Utilities Director, Bob Montague, will give an update on Public Utilities, proposed fiscal year '24 operating budget, and also the water and sewer CIP.
We'll be taking a break after this one. Well, thank you. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Wilson, members of council. It's my pleasure to be here today to present the Public Utilities FY '24 operating budget. And as the manager said, I'll give you a brief overview of our CIP as well. So to start off with, Public Utilities is organized around four bureaus, including operations, our business division, engineering, and the technical services division. We have 416 employees and this recommended budget actually includes one new FTE in our business division. This is a cost neutral request where funding from two part-time contracted positions will be converted to pay for it. This position supports, bless you, the billing of stormwater charges. And the hope is that with the permanent position, we'll see a reduction in turnover and ongoing training needs that we, that we see. Our budget is $141.3 million. And on this next slide, you kind of see where those revenues come from. It's important to note that Public Utilities operates as a self-supported enterprise fund. And this slide details our revenues, 94% of which come from monthly water and sewer charges that are billed directly to our customers. Our budgeted expenditures are detailed here. We tend to be very consistent with our cost centers, which tend to include personnel being the largest, followed closely by the Norfolk Services Contract and Water Sales Agreement, and then our operating expenses. This next slide gives you a line item view of our operating budget. And the proposed '24 budget represents a $4.7 million increase over the current fiscal year. And these, the increase is driven primarily by cost increases in personnel, O and M, and new requirements brought about by the EPA's newly revised lead and copper rule. And I'll explain a little bit about this rule. This rule is not only impacting Virginia Beach, but the entire country. The new requirement, the requirement is really geared towards getting lead out of the, out of the utility. And in Virginia Beach, we're pretty fortunate in being a younger city where lead components in our utility system is not nearly as big an issue for us. We tend to think it's next to nothing, but we actually have found a couple of lead service lines over the past three or, or four months. But the new rule requires that all utilities go out and conduct an inventory of water service lines, both on the public side and the private side throughout your, your entire service area. So for us, that's 135,000 accounts where we have to go out and conduct an inventory of the pipe materials that are out there. As you can imagine, that's a significant and costly endeavor. So we're, we're funding to ensure that we're in compliance with this new mandate. So I wanted to point out a few of the more significant changes on this slide. The first is a $2.2 million increase in our Regulatory Management Bureau. That's where, the bulk of this is associated with this lead and copper rule revision. And then we also have some strategic planning funding that's been added there. We have a $1.2 million increase in our Sewer Pump Stations Bureau. This is really driven primarily by a realignment of existing personnel from, from another bureau. But beyond those organizational changes, we have included some additional funding for anticipated increase in our electrical costs to run our pump stations. And we have 414 of those sewer pump stations distributed around the city. The Norfolk Service Contract and Sales Agreement actually is, has a $1.4 million reduction. And this is associated with a revised estimate that Norfolk has done in terms of estimated cost of providing services to Virginia Beach under that agreement. So that reduction is a, is a good thing in this year. We have a $1.8 million increase in our pay-as-you-go funding. And that, that's funding, that's cash funding that we derive from our current operating revenues that we use as means of partial financing of our capital program. Our reserves are reducing in the proposed budget by $1.2 million. And that, that's really just a function of in the current year, we had to increase the reserves to address the pay increases, the new step program, and some market adjustments to some of the titles that we use in, in Public Utilities, along with some VRS rate changes. So as for budgeted revenues, this chart reflects the corresponding $4.7 million increase derived from charges for services and connection fees. And we'll talk more about that increase of just a couple slides later. But first, I wanted to talk about challenges, both in FY '24 and beyond. We've seen minimal growth in our customer accounts, right around 4% since 2011. And with that, with that growth, in Virginia Beach, we're primarily a residential community. And the advent of water-saving plumbing fixtures really tends to impact us in Virginia Beach where as residents are putting in new efficient washing machines, showerheads, toilets, that sort of thing, there's a net reduction in water demand from those existing residents who are taking those measures. So as we have new homes, new apartment communities that are coming online, what we've typically been, what we've typically seen is any increased demand from the new development gets offset by conservation measures from our, our existing customer, customer base. So on the one thing, in terms of water conservation and extending water resources, that's a great thing. From a revenue standpoint, not, not quite as, as great. Our, our costs, like you've heard from Public Works, are, are increasing. That, that we're not unique in that regard. And most of our cost centers, as we talked about in our earlier slide, are really non-discretionary. Those items like the contract with Norfolk, our personnel costs and O and M costs, they tend to be what they are. So what we're seeing as we continue to have challenges in terms of addressing our, our aging infrastructure as a maturing city, our, our pipe in the ground is getting older. I have slides a little bit later that shows you some information about that. Other challenges include a very competitive labor market. In this region, we tend to compete for the same group of contractors who do very specialized work. For us, it's, it's putting a pipe in the ground, it's the construction or rehabilitation of pump stations. There's not a ton of contractors who do that very, very specialized work. So in addition to us straining the, the existing contracting market, we're really being impacted by inflation as well. In fact, in 2022, our engineering estimates were, were exceeded by nearly 48% by the bids that we were receiving. So we've been adjusting our CIP, pushing some projects out, doing the work that we can with, with our available funding. As I mentioned, we're an enterprise fund, so we've got to live within, within our existing revenues. We have had increased personnel costs associated with the actions that we've taken as a city with the STEP program. And again, addressing, making some market adjustments to some of our position titles. And then we have the impacts of, of these federal mandates from the EPA. In the case of the lead and copper rule revision, that's about a $1.6 million increase to our annual operating budget. So the net impact of these challenges comes down to increased costs that are outpacing our revenues in the face of relatively flat growth. And ultimately, we're at a point where we need to adjust our rates. We've recently completed a comprehensive cost of service study and it's indicated a need to implement a series of rate increases over the next five years to ensure that our revenues are sufficient to cover our projected costs. This chart shows the recommended increase for fiscal year '24 to the water rate, the water service availability charge, and the sanitary sewer service charge. So first, the water rate was last increased four years ago in fiscal year '20. And that rate increase was used to offset the cost of the new service and water sales agreement with the city of Norfolk. For fiscal year '24, the water rate is proposed to increase 30 cents from $4.90 to $5.20 per thousand gallons. And next, the water service availability charge, which is a, is a fixed monthly charge, is recommended to be increased 59 cents from $4.41 to $5.00 per month. And finally, the sanitary sewer charge is also assessed as a monthly fee and is proposed to increase 77 cents from $30.81 to $31.58 per month. So you might ask, okay, well, what, what does the impact of these recommended rate increases look like? And in total, the new rates will result in a monthly increase, increase in water and sewer charges of $2.86 to the average residential bill. This next slide shows comparative water and sewer charges for city in the, cities in the region. And as you see, Virginia Beach still remains very competitive, even with the recommended rate increase that shows that it having the second lowest combined charges in the region, again, based upon the average residential bill. This next slide shows the full schedule of recommended increases through fiscal year '28, including the monthly dollar impact for residential customers and the percentage change to water and sewer charges for those residential accounts. And spacing the increases out over five years, our goal is to take an incremental approach to ensure sufficient revenues to cover our costs while also trying to minimize the impact to monthly water and sewer charges in a given year for our customers. As part of the cost of services study that was recently completed, we also took a look at our capital recovery fees. So in addition to those monthly charges, the study identified the need to increase these capital recovery fees. And these are one-time equity buy-in charges for new customers who are connecting to the public system. This table outlines the recommended schedule of fee increases. And these were last adjusted in fiscal year 2015, so, so nine years ago. The, the impact for a new residential connection in Virginia Beach that's connecting to water and sewer is 1,600, just over $1,600 with the recommended increases. And then lastly, the study recommended increases to our water tap and meter fees. These are not as heavily used as they once were when the city was going through lots and lots of growth. But these fees are recommended to increase to more appropriately recover the costs associated with meters, materials, equipment and labor. And these fees were last adjusted in FY '16. So moving on from these recommended fee increases, I wanted to give you a quick overview of our CIP. It includes 33 water and 27 sewer projects in the six-year program with a investment in FY '24 of $39.7 million towards our aging infrastructure in our public water and sewer systems. The next slide shows how we pay for our capital program. And it's funded through a mix of revenue bonds, pay-as-you-go funding, again, which is, is cash funding from our current operating expenses. And then the use of our net assets in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. You'll see that, that we try to make a healthy investment in our CIP in terms of funding the CIP through non-borrowed funds. And with the six-year program, we're slated to And with the six-year program, we're slated to actually pay 34% of our capital program through non-borrowed funds, which in turn helps us to mitigate our reliance on on debt financing. So a few highlights of of our capital program. This this actually shows some construction work that's happening right now in our Pembroke Meadows subdivision. This work that you see here is part of a $5.1 million contract, which is actually the first phase of this neighborhood project, where sewer mains and water mains, and primarily water mains, are being completed. And the contractor is doing a really good job. We're we're never able to to do these without some level of disruption and inconvenience. But as far as a neighborhood water and sewer replacement, this is about as good as it gets, and we've got a scheduled completion of March 24th for this phase. This this next highlight is is a construction project that's just recently completed on our Lake Gaston Pipeline. And it's it's hard to believe, but we're now 25 years into the use of the Lake Gaston Pipeline, and so we're having to reinvest some money into our our most important asset. And here, what you see is the the westernmost river crossing for the pipeline. There's actually six overhead river crossings, or there used to be six overhead river crossings. Now there are are five. And this is the overhead crossing at the Maheron River. And the picture that you see at the top is what I would characterize as a very minor log jam that we've been dealing with in the 25 years since this pipeline has been in place. This westernmost river crossing has a has more steeply sloped banks, and during flooding events, the support structure for this crossing catches these logs, and it's a very expensive endeavor. Clearing the logs isn't the worst thing. Sometimes we we've had to address pretty significant bank erosion at this location. So we have finally taken the initiative to solve this problem once for all, once and for all, and this pipeline has now been rerouted underneath the Maheron River. So hopefully, that log jam that you see there is the last one that that we'll have to deal with. And plus, the pipeline there was was due for a paint job, so we didn't have to deal with that either. This next slide, so so I asked my staff, I challenged my staff, you know, we we will routinely, in the city manager's update, tell you about new new pump stations, new projects that have been completed. And the pump stations always look like this, you know, a a brick building. There's there's nothing very sexy about them. But we were successful in actually taking an artistic picture at sunset of of one of our brick buildings. So this one looks a little bit better. So as we're working to address our aging infrastructure in the current environment, our engineering group is considering alternative contracting strategies to better deal with inflationary and supply chain challenges. As an example, inserting cost escalators to allow contractors to better deal with the uncertainty of material costs in our world, you know, the big thing is the cost of ductile iron. In the meantime, we continue to evaluate operational needs and data to re-prioritize our projects and project scopes to work within available funding to ensure we're in the best position that we can be in to continue with the provision of safe and reliable water and sewer collection services. And lastly, we we do have one new project in our six-year program, and that's the Stumpy Lake Dam Improvement Project, which is is intended to ensure that we stay in compliance with all applicable applicable damp safety regulations. So these pie charts tell the story of a maturing city, where the average age of our water and sewer mains are now 39 years old. And the the blue sections of these pie charts represent projects addressing aging infrastructure, which is is exactly the lane that we want to be in in the investments that we're making in our our capital program. So if you look out on the right-hand side, the average sewer main is 39 years old. We're we're 88% of our investment in our CIP is geared towards pulling old pipe out of the ground, putting new pipe in, relining, doing things like that. On the water side, the percentage is about 20% less, but we characterize a a healthy percentage of of our water capital projects as road wake coordination, and a lot of that could just as easily be considered as replacing aging infrastructure as well. So the the point of that is is that our our money is going where it's most needed in in the city to help us to to keep this average as close to where it is as we possibly can. So initiatives underway and conclusion, we're actually have an interesting feasibility study that's underway right now, where we're looking advanced metering infrastructure, and and that's the the use of of smart meters and computer networks to automate the collection of of meter readings. So you can get those remotely and possibly even do things like remote water turn on and and turn off. We're in the the midst of this feasibility study now, so hopefully, we'll have more information to share with you on that in in future presentations. We mentioned before EPA's revised lead and copper rule, and Public Utilities is taking the steps now to ensure that we remain in compliance. I think we're out in front of most of our counterparts across the state in regard to what we've accomplished so far, so we continue to be in good shape there. And finally, some things never change in our world, in the utility industry. Our focus and planning in trying to address our aging infrastructure has been and will continue to be our primary challenge. So I appreciate your time and attention today, and I'm happy to address any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions at all? Bob, your career does remarkable work when you think about, you know, the employees, what it takes to keep a city like this going, the size. Thank you all very much.
Certainly appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, at this point, any council comments or initiatives or anything? Jen, and then Michael.
Trying to get out in front of Rocky. All right, I have four reports. Either District 10 for the win today. All right, I have four reports. I'll end with something in the water in case Dr. Ross Hammond has something she'd like to add. First, I'm super excited. So this is active transportation update, advisory committee update. So this committee is super cool because Walter Camp is the chair, and then the work of the committee, it's trying to build connectivity across our city for folks who move around other than using car. So right, so biking, walking, skateboarding, whatever. And so there's a a vision for how to connect our city. And starting in May, trying to get these talk points right, May 2022, there was an effort to build a map or to design a map that showed different bike routes and how they connect across our city. But the challenge was there weren't a lot of systems that talk to each other across departments. There wasn't a lot of staff who could do GIS sort of mapping and just some technological issues. And so yes, at yesterday's meeting, or this past week's meeting, Corinne, Corinne Green with Parks and Recs, I want to make sure I shout her out, she did the heavy lift of creating a GIS map that begins to show all the bike routes and how they're connected across the city and what kind of pathway it is, if it's shared use, if it's, you know, it's its own bike lane. And then they're going to figure out what's missing and how updated is this information? How safe is this? And so it's in development, it's on the way, and the goal is to make this available for public use so that people who are riding, who are walking, can go ahead and check and see how difficult is this path, how stressful would this path be if I wanted to take it to get from one place to another? So I think that's a pretty cool development, and I want to shout out that committee for the work they're doing in Walter Camp for always trying to find money, because we know that's hard to come by these days. So always looking for ways to find funding for our trails and for our bikeways. The Minority Business Council Spring Event is on Thursday, so it's for SWAM contractors. They're part, or there's a number of folks in the construction industry who will be participating. So I took a screenshot so I can get the time, the date right. It is on April 13th from 1 to 4, the NBC Spring Contractors Roundtable, and it's at the ATC located at Tidewater Community College, the Advanced Technology Center. So if you go to vb.gov.com and search SWAM business, you can find the registration link for that. For the election system input, there are some important dates to keep in mind. So the surveys have been mailed out. They were for the folks who were randomly selected to participate. The surveys were mailed out April 7. Those individuals have until May 26 to return their responses. And then the online survey opens up to the public April 19. So for individuals who didn't receive a mailed copy, they can still participate using the online questionnaire that's available on the 19. And then finally, some Something in the Water updates. This Friday at Mount Trashmore, so that's April 14th from 4 to 7, is a Lead the Wave event. It's free and open to the public. It's meant to support small businesses in our community. And Dr. Ross Hammond and I had an update last week, a couple weeks ago, with how things are going with the festival. And I think now that we are finally getting the festival back to Virginia Beach, the first year was a lot of what is this? And then it went to DC, and now it's back in Virginia Beach. And a big guiding theme around the festival is belonging. So to ensure that not only does the festival belong here, but people in the community, that it's, you know, it's folks finding a home and finding a place here. So a guiding theme for them is a year of impact. So it's a weekend festival, but there's, as they will announce, I don't want to get ahead of it, so I won't say a whole bunch, but there's some exciting things coming, a whole lot of exciting things that will be rolling out all month. And the hope is that it's, you know, beyond the weekend, but this is a community-building effort. And so just wanting to start to get really excited about that as it's coming up, but also want to shout out the city staff and some of the festival organizers who held a public meeting last week to inform the public about safety plans and traffic plans. And there will be disruptions to traffic, so plan for it. So for the weekend, just, you know, they're they're doing all they can to mitigate inconvenience, but just to manage expectations, there will be some. And so that information is available to the public, and I'm super excited about the good work that all these committees are doing, and looking forward to a lot of fun activities happening this month.
Amelia, any follow?
They told me to make sure I have Skechers, Skechers?
Skechers.
The right shoes.
I like Hoka's.
Yeah, someone's mentioned that.
I'll be wearing a hot pink Nikes if you'll be looking for me at the festival. Looked at, they're bright pink, you can't miss it.
Great, positive report. Mayor, do you have something, then Barbara?
Just wanted to say, Miss Rocky, you want to talk about?
I don't have my notes here. We got something Monday, right?
Yes. So Rocky and I have been appointed to the ad hoc committee from the from the school board on vocational education, and we are going to be having our first meeting on Monday.
Okay, great. That's good news. Okay, Barbara, and then Michael, and then Amelia.
Several weeks ago, we had a presentation about the AVANGRID proposed, and we talked about wanting to have a public input session. And I, the last I'd heard was tentatively May 4, I believe. I'm not sure if that's still there, or if maybe with the budget, it needed to be changed or anything. Is it still a go? Is that set, or do we need to find another date?
It's still May 4. It'll be here, and we, press release yesterday.
Put out a press release yesterday. And it will be where?
In council chambers.
In council chambers here.
I think, Maddie, you got the time.
It's 6:30. We've already received sign-ups for it as well.
And the goal of AVANGRID is going to come and answer all the questions that council has, but also the questions that the public has submitted. They've submitted a detailed report that we sent back to them, and we're going to release it out publicly to council until you all head of the meeting.
So the public should be submitting questions to AVANGRID? Is that the way it's supposed to go?
We've already, we like collected all the questions that we've gotten, and AVANGRID has collected them, and they've submitted a detailed report, hoping to address all that. There probably likely will be more questions at the public hearing as well.
And so this event on May 14th will be a public hearing?
May 4.
I mean, May 4th for the public to speak?
It'll be a public briefing first. I think what council said, they wanted AVANGRID to come and give their presentation about the merits and the strengths and the weaknesses of their project. And after that, council will hear from the public.
So the council will actually be conducting it? I mean, we're, we will be in the council chamber seated as we normally are. That's where we are. And AVANGRID will be making presentations. Is that the way? Because I I am getting questions about whether or not it's going to happen then, or how it's going to happen, so.
Maddie, you want to?
So the direction I got received from city councils a few, many months or so ago, that you all wanted a public briefing from the developers, and you all would ask questions to them, and then open it up for public comment. The public can come and speak, and then give AVANGRID an opportunity to come back up and answer any questions that were posed during that. That was my understanding. And that's on May 4. And Ms. Henley, at your request, it's beginning at 6:30, I think you had a meeting that had you had a conflict. So it's going to begin at 6:30. AVANGRID will also have an opportunity to be here earlier than they set up, so if public wants to come in and speak to them directly and hear about their project, that's an opportunity for them as well. I have not nailed down a time for AVANGRID, but I would say at least a few hours in advance of the meeting, you'll be here.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael and Amelia.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to just share that last Thursday, I attended an event called Touch a Truck at Windsor Woods Elementary School. It was a really fantastic event, and I want to just take a moment to extend my appreciation to the entire staff at Windsor Woods Elementary, to the folks in the school division who organized the event, as well as all the people from the city of Virginia Beach who supported the event. If you don't know what Touch a Truck is, it's an event where vehicles come, mostly trucks, but also cars, like police cars, fire trucks. The bucket truck from Cox Cable, there were dozens and dozens, no exaggeration, of vehicles there, including a helicopter. And it was a day that those students will never forget. You know, I I think about elementary school, and it's just like a handful of days that you really remember, and that really resonate with with students. And it was not an easy lift. It was a lot of work. I was watching those people work very, very hard, the organizers, the volunteers, the parents, the teachers, the staff, the school division staff, all of the professionals who were there to support those kids, and all the logistics involved. It was all worth it because those kids were having the time of their lives. I know they slept great that Thursday night, and they told great stories to their parents, and hopefully were inspired about all the opportunities that are available to them. And I just don't want to miss the opportunity to recognize that work. It was a lot of work for one elementary school, but well worth it. Probably all, you know, the only thing that, you know, it was just, it was just great. Great to see, and those people invested their heart and soul in it, and they should be applauded. Thank you.
Amelia, and then Josh.
First, a tiny kickback off yours, but also thank the staff of that sixth or eighth people came to advantage of after AM standing there, listening. What are you doing? I want to also see, and they answered patiently all these questions that people had, because people left feeling satisfied. Another thing I want to mention, I attended the CBDA/CDBX student internship where they had 125 young people from Princess Anne out there getting internship, and about 6,000, I think, in scholarship for three.
7,500.
7,500. And also, they did a special kudos to Josh, because, you know, for what he's done and worked with them. So I really enjoyed that, and honestly, they were great, that group. Yesterday, we had a meeting with the Western Hotel Condos in Studio 56, and it was a big group, could have easily had 50 to 60 out there at the Western Hotel for this meeting. They wanted to know about their SSD and their taxes, and we were bracing for, you know, what's coming down the pipe. But luckily, we had Kevin Chatler, one of his others who came, sent by Patrick, and they expressed all their questions, and he was ready to address a lot of that as well. So it was very civil. Thanks to our staff for being there with me for this huge group of people. The other thing that happened was, oh, I Other thing that happened was, oh, I meant to mention Jeannie Evans-Cox. She was very good. She came to that as well to speak and put together the one for the CBDA/CDBX. Finally, the NSU, as you know, they had their special gala over at the Western, the Virginia Beach Alumni Chapter, and they were just impressed. Some of them had never been in the Western, and they loved the food and said, we didn't know Virginia Beach people cooked like this. So, you know, that was important. And the president was there, she left a message. She says, if we ever have paid internship, they have students. He's something like that. Okay, so that is my report.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to piggyback off what Councilwoman Ross Hammond was saying, internship day was fantastic. Thirty-one years the CBDA has been doing this partnership with Princess Anne High School, and they had 130 students and 30 companies participate. And I've taken interns every year as I was a part of the CBDA prior to coming on council. And it is really great to give a students and just help them kind of navigate, you know, the choices ahead of them in terms of going to college, going into the workforce and otherwise. I wanted to thank our city manager, who I believe your department took a couple of interns, and the mayor, I believe you gave your time and met with some of the interns as well. So thank you very much for that. I also wanted to call attention to some of the work of your Active Transportation Committee and the email that we received this week from Walter Camp referencing $89 million of state funding, which is an eight-fold increase in prior years that is available to localities to go after for bikeways and trails expansion and implementation. And I know that we have submitted proposals in the past, but we've come up short. But I know that a component of analyzing whether or not to award these, the next round of funds is whether or not you got money in the first place last time, and we didn't. So it is ripe for the taking, and I hope that we can have a conversation about giving some direction to our government affairs liaison to go after some of those dollars.
Ma'am, Dave, we have some really remarkable students for futures indeed. I tell you, outstanding stuff. Worth.
Lastly, my first town hall meeting will be April 26 at 6 o'clock. Doors open at Lincoln, Lanhorn Park Elementary School on First Colonial Road. Thanks to the City Clerk's Office, Lauren Hopkins and Drew Langford of Communications for setting that up. Program will start about 6:30, and Mr. LJ Hanson will be there to speak, Captain Harry O'Brien of the Second Precinct, and school board member Beverly Anderson and myself will be there. So public is welcome. April 26, 6:30, Lanhorn Park Elementary School.
Thank you. Lot of stuff going on. Excellent reports. Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.23711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes: publicly held property; discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose or for disposition of publicly held property; where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A3, District 2. Also, public contract; discussions of the award of a public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A29 Atlantic Park Construction Contracts. And then personal matters; discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2371A1, and that's council appointments of council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion? So moved. Second motion in a second. Aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are. Aye.
Aye.
Councilor Rouse.
Aye.
Councilor Shulman.
Aye.
Councilor Wooten.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are returned. Thank you.